Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Leon Valley City Council Regular Meeting. Today's Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, and it's approximately 11 minutes after 6:00. Thank you all very much for being patient. We were in executive session and went a little bit over. We do have a quorum. Counselor Rodriguez, Counselor Hody, Counselor Bradshaw, and myself are here in chambers. Counselor Charles and Counselor Alcazar are online. We do have a quorum. Everyone is present. And Mr. Hody, would you please lead us in the pledge this evening? Thank you. If you'll please stand and join us for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as the Lord has.
Yes.
Can I have something to add before we go?
Sure.
Okay. I was going to ask for a point of order on the agenda. I requested that item 8.5 be the last item on the agenda. On the request I made for this agenda item on the 28th, I would respectfully ask that item 8.5 be moved to 8.6 so that this is the last item on the agenda per my April request, if that's okay.
Okay. Well, that's how I wanted to set it up as well, but I -- it was moved by the managers. So we'll go ahead and move. If there's no objection from the council, we'll go ahead and move. We'll move 8.5 to 8.6. And 8.6 will be 8.5 if there's no objection. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Let me just, again, welcome y'all and good evening. Again, I wanted to read, in order to improve the manner in which our council meetings are run, the following are additional measures to implement. No one will be allowed to speak unless called upon by the presiding officer. This includes council members, staff, and citizens who are here in the chambers. If you are in the council chambers, please raise your hand because I can't see everybody, and then I will recognize you so you can speak. And I would appreciate if you're online remoting, if you would turn on your video, if we could see you and raise your hand. That would help in the, I think, the flow of the meeting. All citizens to be heard comments emailed in shall be read by the presiding officer. If the counselor calls for a point of order, the presiding officer shall recognize you, then state what rule is not being followed. And this is in the meeting, and we'll go from there. Our local rules do address that no city council members, staff, or members of the public shall shout, display unruly behavior, distract with side conversation, use profanity, threaten violence, or disrupt the orderly contact of the meeting. In addition, no public attacks on staff, members of the public, or city council shall be allowed. As a reminder or warning will be given if the behavior continues, you will be asked to leave the chambers or -- or, of course, I don't know if there's anybody on the phone, but that's when we had the phone or video. Okay. So civility, courtesy, please. Let's treat each other with respect and dignity. Thank you. So then we'll move to the presentation, agenda item number two, number 2.1.
Mayor, the mayor, Charles.
Yes, ma'am. I can't see you, but anyway.
Are we following the protocol that was set by council?
Are we following the protocol sent by council? What do you mean?
Set by council.
I believe we are.
It sounded like there were things mentioned that I hadn't heard before.
Oh, I read the same thing last meeting. There was no changes at all. I was just trying to tighten up the meeting as far as raising your hand. And gosh, if you could turn on your video to raise your hand, that would be great because then I could see you and I could recognize you before you spoke. But when you're -- I can't do that now, so. But no, we're following the protocols for sure. Okay. So we're moving. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move to agenda item presentation 2.1, Presentation of Monthly Financial Report, ending April 30th, 2020. And we have Mr. Messick, our Assistant Finance Director, here this evening to present. Good evening and welcome.
Can't see you, but I'm smiling.
I know. Well, that's what I was saying. You have to smile with your eyes, right?
Right.
We haven't had a financial report since January, I think. So when I saw this on --
It's been a bit.
I wanted to -- for you to give us an update, and that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, if you'll go through it, and then we'll get questions from our participants in the chambers and then from our council. Okay. Thank you.
Well, good evening, mayor and councillors.
Good evening.
Did I hit the button? Okay. This evening's financial report is for the month of April, and we're seven months into the fiscal year, and so that means our target percentage should be about 58.3%. And let's go ahead and see how we did, starting off with our general fund. The overall big picture on the general fund, our revenues collected at this point, about 67.4% of what we had budgeted. We're running about 8.5 million in collections on the revenue side. On the expenses, about 52% of what we had budgeted, or about 7.5 million. So that's nearly a million-dollar spread, revenues over expenses, which is pretty good for this time of the year. Of course, in the beginning of the year, ad valorem revenue carries us through the budget cycle, and as you can see, we're about 92% collected on the ad valorem side as of April. Then sales taxes and the rest will carry us through the rest of the year, of course. Sales tax reflected here for the month of February, and about 40.6% collected at this point is about where we would expect to be. And we are about 0.3% over what we had collected in sales taxes versus April of last year.
Is that overall 0.3% since November? November, December, January, February?
October, November.
Okay. Okay. So we're slightly above and not down.
Yeah, we'd like to see it higher, but at least it's positive.
Yes, okay. Well, that's good news. Okay. Thank you.
Again, doing pretty well here as well. Revenue collected so far, about 64% of what was budgeted. Expenses about 40.8%. Our major revenue generators in the water fund are all sitting at their target marks. So overall, pretty healthy on this fund. Community Center Fund, the overall big picture here, we're doing well, of course, on the revenue side, 145% collected because of that big miscellaneous transfer in from the Economic Development Fund for the community development remodel, that $191,000. There are no expenses listed on this report. I do apologize. It's a big old zero up there. It should be $81,235 on the expense side for this fund, which would be about 19% of what we had budgeted.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we -- I guess when we set the budget last summer, we didn't know we were going to shut down the community center for how many months? So is that going to -- I guess that's going to impact our bottom line, right?
Oh, absolutely. And plus, the remodel will shut it down as well.
And the remodel, yeah. So -- but we don't know how much yet. Okay. Just because we budgeted it on income every month from those two facilities.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
On the economic development slide, Ms. Crystal? Thank you. Okay. So economic development, revenues are -- that we've collected so far, we're about 66% of what was budgeted, or that $205,000. Of course, that was bolstered by the $80,000 miscellaneous revenue, the Larry Little Bond refund that was included in that. Expenses, about 75.3% of what was budgeted. And of course, there was a lot of transfers out of the fund this year for the community center remodeling. Seneca West was $313,000 active net and so on.
And do we have -- and what is in our reserve fund then, separate from the actual budgeted?
Yeah, so.
What do we have in the reserve now? Because we had 815, but then we took all that.
Yeah. And so, fund balance, if we get everything that we say, we're going to get revenues-wise, and we don't go over on the expenses, we're looking at roughly $175,000 at the end of the year for fund balance.
Okay.
Now, on the project funding line, there's still about $100,000 left on that.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
And Red Light Camera Fund, doing really well. On the revenue side, we're about -- we're nearly 80% of revenue collected versus what we had budgeted. So that's $1.6 million. Overall expenses there on the bottom, nearly are just under $1 million, which is about 44% of what was budgeted. So taking along pretty good in the Red Light Camera.
So I guess we haven't been impacted on COVID then?
Yeah.
You know, as far as the tickets. I thought we would be. Okay. Thank you.
Impound Lot, finally. Is there a last one, I believe? And so far, revenues are reflecting the two auctions that we've had thus far. We'd have a third auction here in May, which will reflect on the next report, of course. But even still, revenues, about 34% of what we had hoped, or what we had budgeted at this point, and expenses, $88,000, and that's about 51%. So overall, pretty healthy.
Floyd, that auction that we just had that's not included in here brought in about $27,000, right?
Correct.
So you would add that.
It's not included in here.
Right.
Okay. And last slide? And this slide was requested, I believe, by Counselor Rodriguez. It's a pie chart of the expenses thus far incurred for the Benny Martinez investigations, and those are broken out for you there. The overall, what those numbers add up to is $145,195. And that is all for the presentation. Whatever questions you all may have?
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Let me ask from our guests and residents in the chambers. Do you have any questions on the budget presented by Mr. Messick, the April budget? Okay. Seeing no one, do I have any questions from the councillors either online or here in the chambers?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
I did request this, and is this up to date? How or how close to today's date is this?
It's up to date, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And sir.
Like through April 2020?
I just received it.
Oh, okay. But reflected the April. Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Yes. Counselor Bradshaw.
I had a question on the -- on the water sewer fund. We're at 64% revenue.
Excuse me, let us go back to that so we can see. Thank you.
Right. Revenue year-to-date, 64%, and expenditures 40.8. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, and you said this is six months' worth, or?
Seven months.
Seven months' worth. So do we expect to continue on the same trend?
Revenues-wise, we have been trending about where we expect to be. We've been hitting our targets every month, so we should -- yes, sir, we should.
Okay. I just wonder, I look at this discrepancy in, you know, in the what we're bringing in revenue versus what we're expending, and it just seems that, you know, maybe we can lower water rates. I've had many, many citizens complain about water rates certain months, that $350, $400 water bills in some months. And I know it's because of our tiered system, so that's what I was wondering.
And, okay.
Maybe we'll look at that at a future meeting.
And what about the miscellaneous at 257.7? What does that reflect? Did you already -- was that the grant, the CDVG grant or something? Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to be sure. I knew where to put it. Okay. Thank you. All right.
I have a question, mayor.
Yes, I can't -- yes. Counselor Alcazar.
On the pie chart? Can we see it again? I was wondering why it keeps going up and what the status of the yellow is.
Ms. Counselor, if you'll please address that.
Counselor Alcazar, the case is still ongoing, and I think if you would like to discuss the case in executive session, we certainly can. But anything that's public record on this case is filed with the court and can be looked up with the courts online.
Okay. If you don't mind, I would like to get an update next meeting, please.
Yes, ma'am. We can -- we will arrange that. We will arrange that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Mr. Messick, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. Stay safe and stay healthy. All right. Moving then to agenda item number 2.2. This was requested at the last meeting to recognize Mike McDonald for his work in the natural area, and I would like to read Agenda Item 2.2, Service Award, whereas Michael McDonald, co-founder of the 36-acre Hevner Canyon Natural Area, has a unique urban wildlife refuge, and whereas he initially helped to catalog the great diversity of trees, plants, mammals, birds, insects, fish, and reptiles in the natural area, whereas he discovered numerous Native American artifacts and pioneer artifacts in the natural area and brought in experts to analyze them. Whereas he discovered the numerous 50- to 100-million-year-old fossils in and around the Natural Area Creek and identified them, whereas he has been the primary caretaker of the natural area for its first 15 years, whereas he has envisioned a youth program to educate and inspire children about nature and their neighborhood. He has also been an active and caring citizen of Leon Valley, consistently urging the city to maintain its neighborhood. And he has lived in Leon Valley for 33 years, and he's earned a master's degree in environmental management for the University of Texas at San Antonio. So we thank Mr. McDonald for his efforts. Now, therefore, I, Chris Riley, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor and speaking on behalf of the entire city council and staff and all of our citizens, do hereby thank Mr. Mike McDonald for being a good neighbor. Signed by my hand this 19th day of May, 2020. So if you haven't had a chance to go over to the natural area, it's just a jewel of a spot in the middle of an urban area, and so it's very peaceful and very quiet and cooler than the park. So thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your efforts.
He has done a lot.
He has done a lot. He really has. And the benefactor is going to be the historical study because they've got all the fossils, everything he's collected, and they're going to make sure that they are identified and displayed once they get that house up and running, or the museum. So, but thank you. All right. Then moving to Agenda Item Number Three, we have the city manager's report. Ms. Counselor, if you'll please begin.
Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. First of all, I want to congratulate the Leon Valley Municipal Court for successfully holding their first Zoom court last Thursday. Next docket is going to be held the same way. Chief Salvaggio has been working with both the municipal court judges in an effort to ensure the safety of not only the court participants when they do open back up, but anybody else in and around City Hall. So they will open back up partially in June per the administrative office of the court's order. I want to congratulate, I don't think she's around, I know she has a presentation tonight, but Ivana Cunha, she has been serving the City of Leon Valley for 20 years. I think April was her anniversary date. So congratulations to her. We are also very proud of our former Assistant Police Chief, Ruben Saucedo, who was recently named the Converse City Police Chief. Lieutenant David Gonzalez has been promoted to Assistant Police Chief, and Mike Tackard was promoted to Lieutenant. Ruben sends his best to council and wanted me to explain that the reason I wasn't able to say anything last meeting, we've known for a little while, was because he was nervous because he was still going through a background check, and it wasn't, you know, signed, sealed, delivered. And so he wanted to make sure he still had a spot here just in case. And so, anyway, we've been holding this back for a while, but it's certainly public now. And he started yesterday, actually. He texted us yesterday showing us pictures of his new office and stuff. So we're really proud and happy for him, and he said to let you all know that he would be back once he got his head above water to come back and personally thank the council and the city. Thank you to the fire chief and his efforts for ensuring that this room was sanitized. We're talking services, seating, door handles, carpet, everything prior to all of your arrival, and for his ability to add an extra few chairs in here this evening and still ensure social distancing. So thank you, Chief Naughton. Wanted to let you know, thank you, Counselor Alcazar and Counselor Bradshaw for the ideas. Both large boxes in front of the fire station are full from the Best Blessing Box Program. At this time, our issue is, we have a lot of blessings being given and not many being taken, so both of them are really full. If you know someone in need, please let us know so that we can give you as many blessings from those boxes as you need. And if you're unable to make it to the fire station, especially because of the road construction or whatever, we're happy to deliver as well. So we've done many deliveries, and we're happy to do that. But we have more input than output in that program, so thank you for the idea, and it's obviously lots of givers in this community, and that's really neat. The Evers Road sidewalk, to which the final part of the Evers Road sidewalk was a really complicated engineering project. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it was, and it's finished. So the sidewalk between the Forest Oaks Pool and the corner of Evers and Forest Way has finally been completed. And so what that means is that the entire strip of sidewalks on Evers Road in Leon Valley are complete and ADA accessible. So congratulations, because I know that's gone on for years that we've made that happen. So congratulations, you finally did it. We're done with the Evers Road sidewalk. So good job. That concludes my city manager's report. I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for -- I'm sorry.
I'd like to add something to the city manager's report.
Yes, sir. If you'll please come to the podium. Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you very much.
This is for those of you that own notes, our chief of police, Joe Salvaggio.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is part of the city manager's report that she couldn't read, but I want to read it for her. The Texas City Management Association, which is TCMA, as y'all know, is a professional organization of local government administrators dedicated to promoting the highest standards of governance, service, leadership, ethics, and education while embracing individual and regional diversity for the benefit of the membership, their citizens, and the cities of Texas. With over 1,000 active members, TCMA is servant-driven, ethical, inclusive, dedicated to effective partnership with elected officials, devoted to professionalism of our organization and members, and determined to provide quality service to our membership and the cities and citizens we serve. Each year, all 10 Texas regions nominate a representative for three award categories to include Administrator of the Year. This prestigious award recognizes a city management professional who's made significant contributions to the field of local government management in the past 18 months. It is a privilege just to be nominated, as the nomination must come from the staff of the organization to which the administrator serves. Region Eight, which goes from Del Rio to San Antonio, east to Pleasanton, and south to the border, put forth a nomination early in the year, who was selected unanimously for her dedication, teamwork, selflessness, professionalism, and steadfast courage in the face of extreme situations over the past 18-month period. The nomination went forth and was considered against the nominations from the 10 regions that make up the state of Texas. Mayor and council, I'm happy to report that the nomination authored and sent in by her adoring staff was city manager Kelly Kinsler, who was unanimously selected as the Region Eight Representative as Administrator of the Year. I'm even happy to report that Ms. Kinsler was also selected as a Texas City Manager Administrator of the Year for 2020 amongst all the city managers this great state has to offer. The word will be given out in a future city council meeting this summer to come.
Okay.
Just wanted everybody to know, and thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anything else on the city manager's report from the councillors, either online or here in the chambers? And anyone in our chambers this evening that would like to follow up on any of the city managers? I had just one follow-up. If we're going to have an update on that lawsuit that was requested by Counselor Alcazar, I'd like an update on the auditor's lawsuit. That's been years, and I'd just like to see where we are on that, if we could add that to the next executive session. So, anything else? All right. Then let's move to citizens to be heard. I guess we'll begin with the citizens here in the chambers, and then I have four or five to be read here on the dais. So if there's anyone in our chambers that would like to address the council, this is usually on an item that's not on the agenda, as you know, because you are able to speak at each agenda item. So, but anyway, whatever you'd like to say. And if you'll please state your name and where you live, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you.
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. The council approved the purchase of another ambulance that was going to take nine months to arrive. The EMS portion of the Fire Department has not, to the best of my knowledge, received a single additional full-time equivalent worker. And we've got another ambulance coming that's going to require two people 24/7. That's six full-time equivalents. And even more to my concern, I recently had to use the Leon Valley EMS, and I was very pleased with the service they provided. But if one of them comes down with COVID, we've got a problem because we barely have, to the best of my knowledge, barely have enough personnel to man the existing positions. And we're going to have to fill another ambulance with six or more full-time equivalents in the near future. It would seem prudent to me to address that issue now, authorize those FTEs, full-time equivalents, and get the people on board so that they are fully trained and fully familiar with the equipment and the streets that they're going to have to respond to. If I remember correctly, it was nine months to get another ambulance. Well, we're halfway through that time period now, more than halfway, and we haven't addressed the issue of how are we going to man it?
Okay.
Add that to the COVID situation, you could have an ambulance crew come down with COVID, and they're gone. They're out of circulation for a minimum of 14 days. So I think it would be prudent for the council to address the issue of more FTEs and let the fire chief begin working on filling those positions before we discover we're backed up against a wall, we've got the equipment, and now we can't run it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Appreciate it. No, it's so noted. We will address that up. Don't see -- oh, there's Chief Naughton. Chief Naughton, since you're here, can you address him factually on that? Because we are able to do that during citizens to be heard. Thank you.
The Fire Department has a plan in case we lose an entire shift.
Really?
In place already.
Wow.
It's a good plan. It's not good for the guys just because of the amount of work they'll have to do. But we do have a plan in place. And we're ready for it. We don't have a choice. We've been ready since the first day of COVID.
It's good to know.
So.
Thank you.
Chief, can you also announce that the fact that the new ambulance is not for a new crew and why there's a new ambulance?
The new ambulance is for -- we use two ambulances every single day. Both ambulances are gone at the same time, just like they are right now. And we can't even put a truck in the shop to get the oil changed because we can't go without a second ambulance anytime during the day. And when I got here, we had two wrecked ambulances. The third ambulance gives us the ability to, number one, remount the ambulances when they're used, which will save the city considerable money, and it also gives us the ability to be able to put a truck in the shop.
Oh, great.
We do have guys that can move from a fire truck over to the third ambulance if we need it. If that's what we have to do to make things work, strip them from the fire truck and put them on the ambulance, if that's what the next call them on the ambulance, if that's what the next call is. But with COVID now, the guys are doing COVID right now. It'll take them four hours before that first ambulance is ready to go. Because they have to decon everything. They have to decon the guys, the stretcher, the equipment. They have to pull everything out. The guys have to shower outside. We have an outdoor shower. It's inside, it's in the bays. But a decon shower and then shower, wash all their clothes, do all that. I mean, it's a long process. And that ambulance is out of service until it's completely decontaminated. The third ambulance is going to help that because we can have two up and running while one's being done.
Excellent. Thank you. That's a lot of peace of mind. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for bringing that issue to our attention. And thank you, Chief, for those answers. Okay, anyone else in the chambers that would like to address the council? Please come forward during Citizens to Be Heard. Okay, we've seen somebody coming in from the foyer. Good evening and welcome. And if you'll state your name and where you live, please.
My name is Mark Schilling. I actually don't live in the Leon Valley, but I have a business here.
Okay.
I think support arcade. I just wanted to.
And that's Mark Schilling?
Schilling, yes.
S.C.H.I.L.L.I.N.G. Thank you, Mark.
I just wanted to bring this up at this time because I guess y'all are about to vote on a consent agenda or something like that. And that's where the small business encouragement grant is under. But I have a little girl and these things run long. And I've been in this little taco cafe over here and I know he gets late. So I kind of wanted to come up here and just address. I just wanted to put a face to the thing that y'all are voting on and I just hope y'all take it into consideration. It's businesses like mine that I still don't even have a date as to when I can open. You know, I'm watching the news just like everybody else and.
So it's not this Friday when they're opening up the bowling alleys and aquariums and zoos?
That can open, but there's some verbiage in the governor's order that video arcades, children's interactive play equipment, things like that, still cannot be opened.
Still cannot, okay.
So I'm just hoping you really take that into consideration. It hurts. Like it hurts to be closed and it's tough. So I just wanted to come up here and put a face to the program.
Well, thank you.
I know we're working really hard on that and I appreciate all of that.
And so you've applied for one of those grants then?
Yes, I.
Okay, thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you bet. All right. And is there someone else in the back that's coming to the front? Thank you. Don't y'all love everybody's different face mask? I just, I think it's, well, to have a... No, no, I was just going to say we ought to have a contest about the best face mask in Leon Valley or something, I don't know. Good evening and your name, sir?
My name is Sergio Cardona. And my apologies, I didn't know this was the time for me to come up and speak about it. I'm coming up to speak about that small business encouragement grant because I do not live here in Leon Valley, but I do have a business. It's an amazing play.
Here in Leon Valley?
Yes. Yeah, we're actually, we're located, yes, next to the School of Science and Technology. And for those of you who don't know what we do, we're an indoor playground and party center. So we're not allowed to open yet. And just like the gentleman before me said, we're still waiting on word as to when we can. And the reason why I'm here is to, I guess if you want to say beg, if you guys can approve it by all means, if you're able to. Because my business, as of right now, is on life support and you guys would literally be the last lifeline we have. I don't want you to think that we haven't tried to exhaust all our resources we had available to us. We did the economic injury disaster loan. I just barely received an email on it that they received the application, but since funds have run out, it just says that it'll be processed in the order it was received. We didn't get approval for the Paycheck Protection Program loan.
You did not?
No, we did not because the way our business files, we took a loss last year, so it disqualified us for it. So we, you know, us being closed for two and a half months, we pretty much used up any and all profits that we had. So I literally, and I'm just going to be as honest as I can be because that's the person that I am, we literally only have enough money to pay next month's rent. And if we can't open any, buy next month, then our business is going to have to close because I need at least 30 days to start selling my stuff and getting out. I've tried to see if I can defer payment on my lease or come to an agreement to where maybe, you know, I can give partial payment and they pay the rest. But to no avail because obviously they still have their commitments to pay their properties and stuff like that. So, and I understand it's hard for everybody, but our business is only, with the closure, we're only 17 months old before the COVID. We were doing good, you know, the first few months was kind of, you know, we were barely making it because everybody's getting over the holiday hangover. And then, you know, normally people don't start booking more parties until summer because they're waiting for that tax return and stuff like that. But given the circumstances and stuff like that, I'm not too sure how, you know, the future is going to look on that.
Yes, Mr. Cardona, have you tried Bear County? They have small business loans and grants called the LIFT Fund.
I have not heard of that.
L.I.F.T. And I would just encourage you to www.bear.org. And that's just another source of revenue for small businesses. They have employees, 25 employees or less. It's specific targeted to your type of business.
Okay. I'll definitely look into that. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, sir.
But I'll definitely look into that. But yeah, so again, that's the reason why I'm here.
Okay, very good. Good luck, yes, Ms. Kinsler.
The links to this program are also on our website and on our COVID page and on our Facebook page. But I also wanted just to let you know, it's funny that you're up here because consent item 6.9 today, you are specifically mentioned. The Leon Valley Economic and Community Development Advisory Group is recommending approval to fund a small business encouragement program. And actually, in the PowerPoint that was done by the Business Development Director, he listed you as one of the closed businesses that would benefit from the program that the council's considering tonight.
Great.
So after tonight, if council approves this item, it's just one more avenue for you. And I know that Mr. Cox, I don't know who he's, William Cox? I don't know who he's been in contact with over there, but I know he has been in contact with somebody.
Right, that would be me.
That was you, okay. And so he's the one doing this, he'll have all the information about it. And he also has an email list that he emails all the businesses, all the grant programs that are available. So you need to make sure you're on his email distribution list, too.
Okay, I'll follow up with him.
Okay?
Yeah.
If you need his card, but if you have his information, otherwise I can get you his card.
Right, yeah, no, no, I have his information.
Okay, perfect.
I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for sharing.
Good luck.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, then let me read. We've had a lot of Citizen to Be Heard comments and I've just tried to put them in piles. And this was from a former city council member, Benny Martinez, to be read at Citizens to Be Heard. He says, "I am upset about the way the posting for tonight's meeting was done. I checked on Friday night and the agenda was not posted by 6:00 P.M. Checking Saturday, the agenda and the agenda packet had different information. Since the posting on the city's website was different, is this a violation of Toma? Is tonight's meeting legal? In my years on city council, the meeting was always, has always been posted on Friday. While I agree that the mayor and the city manager can place items on the agenda, the mayor needs to control the meeting. The mayor has the power to set the agenda and postpone an item for a future council meeting. It has been an unwritten policy that the mayor and not the city manager has the final approval on the agenda. Why has this changed? Is this a power play by our dysfunctional city manager to remove all power from our mayor?" And this is from Benny Martinez. The next one is from Rosie Amaya, and this was an email she had gotten from the library. And it was Rosie, FYI, I sent this to the powers that be. And I need to, this is getting.
No, it was just not from Rosie. It's her language. Rosie forwarded it.
She forwarded, yeah. I was going to read her name. Nancy Lopez is who it's from. Thank you. But we got it from Rosie through the library. And it says, "To whom it may concern, I am a longtime fan of the Leon Valley Library for many years. I am 80 years old and depend on hardback novels. I do not like Internet, Nook, or Kindle. I love the smell of the books and they do not hurt my eyes. Since the lib, meaning library, has not been available, I have had to purchase several hardback new release novels. Once I read them, I donate them to the lib library. Why can't you do the library service the way Barnes &amp; Noble does? You order book, you call them when you're coming and park your car in front of their door. They come out and no contact, put your books in my backseat or trunk. They wear masks and gloves. Please let me know if you can do, if you can do. My name is Nancy Lopez and she left her phone number if you have questions." So that's an idea for the library. And this is from Mr. Tom Chippy in Leon Valley. "Please forward this complaint to your appropriate staff member. Today, my daughter was driving over to have a birthday lunch with me and accidentally clipped a garbage can that was left out in the street, Peachtree, too damn far. She is a good kid, has never once fibbed to either parent. She told me she had to move over to dodge some idiot driver going too fast, taking his or her half out of the middle. Do we have any contract language with Tiger that requires the emptied trash cans to be returned to the property? And then in parentheses, 'read here, off the street,' question mark? Is it possible to see any language from our contract that may be pertinent? The replacement mirror was quoted in writing by Gun Honda Service at $591." And he didn't leave a phone number, but maybe we could have somebody follow up with Mr. Chippy on that. And he lives on Peachtree. And this is from Rebecca T. Miles, the Honorable Chris Riley. "I'm writing to say that the response to your, to the fire at our neighbor's home at 6807 Blacksmith, San Antonio, Texas, was truly unfortunate, was truly unfortunate. Yet I saw exemplary work from all the firefighters, the police, and all responders. All were courteous, kind, and caring. I saw professional teamwork. I was proud of everyone. I want to give special remarks for Officer Amaden. I was overcome by the emergency. I am 70 years of age and have all the age-related health problems that come with age, especially fibromyalgia. Officer Amaden was helpful making sure I was out of danger. He watched to make sure I was doing as well as I, as could be. I want to thank him for his help in a very dangerous situation and his attention in helping an old lady. He is a professional in all aspects of his work. Congratulations in having such a courteous officer in your police force. Thank you in advance for your time and attention. Rebecca T. Miles." And I do have a, in a Citizens to Be Heard, I've got actually Citizens to Be Heard 2 and 8.5. And this is from Justin Pulliam. And I really, he is not in the city and I just, is Charlie Zack on the line? Okay, so does the vote that the council took, I'm not sure when this was, a month or six weeks ago, was that for just that meeting or is that for all the meetings? So I don't know if I can read his Citizens to Be Heard or not.
Madam Mayor, it was for all the meetings.
I'm sorry? Who is this?
It was for all the meetings.
Okay, is that everybody's understanding? Okay, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Mayor, I don't think we made a change to any ordinance or anything like that. So how can it be for all the meetings we can't make a decision and it just goes forward without putting it in, without putting it into one of our guidelines or ordinances? I don't believe we, we didn't change the code of conduct on the council or anything like that of the meetings.
Okay, Mr. Zack? Do we need to actually change the something or is it, do we need to vote on it every time or what? I'm not, I see that he's muted. Because there's Citizens to Be Heard and then he has one at 8.5, so there's two. And a conclusion. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Zack, if you could weigh in on that. I didn't want to read it until I got a ruling.
Right, I didn't, I didn't hear the complete question. It was a little garbled.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We have a, an email, or actually it's a letter, I don't know when this came in, May 19th, from Justin Pulliam. And about six weeks ago, the council took a vote at one meeting that said they didn't want to hear from any citizens to be heard that weren't actual citizens of Leon Valley or had a business in Leon Valley. Am I correct on that? I just, I don't want to misstate. And so I'm asking if that was universal forever or was it just that that one meeting? And how do we handle it? Do we have to vote on it every time? Because we haven't changed anything. And I think that's what Mr. Bradshaw.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I don't remember. I mean, I remember that votes were taken in that context, but I don't remember the specific motion or the specific decision by city council. So I'd have to go back and listen to the meetings to know the answer to that question.
Okay. So am I?
Mayor, then, in that case, until he gets updated on his own, it's my recall and my intent, because I made the motion and I'd like to do it again, until further notice that we read in Citizens to Be Heard, if they're not present at the meeting, that we, that it, their letters or texts or whatever they send be put into the record, but not read into the record, only citizens and of Leon Valley, only residents of Leon Valley and businesses in Leon Valley, to facilitate the time problem that we're having constantly. And until further notice, I think this should remain in effect. And I need a second.
I'll second. This is Counselor Charles.
Okay, we have a motion to not read Citizens to Be Heard input if they don't live in Leon Valley, either resident or business, until further notice. And we have a motion by Counselor Alguacere and a second by Counselor Charles. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Bradshaw?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Zack if that's even legal, to not listen to, you know, public input with that new law that was passed, I think last November, that says that public officials must hear criticism of any acts, omissions, decisions. How can we, how can that play into, how can we decide who to listen to, who not to?
Okay, all right, Mr. Zack? Let you.
I believe I opined on that issue the first time this came up, which was, there is not, there is, I'm not aware of any case law that addresses, that addresses that. And I have not done an analysis to come down to complete, you know, to give an opinion one way or the other. But I do not think that the new provision in the Open Meetings Act would be applicable. I'm pulling up right now, I don't have the, I don't have the section memorized. But certainly the provision that relates to criticism of the governing body, I don't think it would be applicable, but I'd have, I'd have to look at the section and I don't have the section memorized off the top of my head.
You had given that to me a while back.
I think it's a different question. So here's what it says. 55107 says, "A governmental body may not prohibit public criticism of the governmental body, including criticism in the act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. This subsection does not apply to public criticism that is otherwise prohibited by law." I don't think that would be applicable in the context of limiting public input to those individuals who are citizens or own businesses, because you're not prohibiting public criticism, you're prohibiting any comment that they have, whether it be positive or negative. And so I'm not too concerned about that being violated. Although, again, this is the first I've been asked about it and so this is just off the top of my head analysis.
Okay. We have Counselor Rodriguez, who would like to add some additional comments.
Mr. Zack, I remember that during our special meeting on the 13th of April, you made some reference to, and these are not your exact words, but you said something to the effect that we were free to decide at each meeting, to decide if we were even going to have a Citizens to Be Heard?
No, I don't think I said that. There's a, if I remember correctly, there's a provision. There's a, if I remember correctly, there's a provision that the governor suspended the provision of 55007, which requires a governmental body to allow each member of the public desiring to address the body at the meeting. That provision of the Open Means Act was suspended and, and continues to be suspended to this day. That's probably what I said.
Okay. No problem, thank you.
Okay, so your ruling is you need to do more research before we can, or we go ahead and vote on the motion and second for today's meeting? And then you'll look into it for future meetings?
I can certainly look into it if, if governing, if it's city council's desire for me to determine whether or not this is an appropriate policy moving forward.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Zack, the, the thing that seems to be forgotten in all of this is their, their voice is not being eliminated. It's just not being read. It's being included in the record. And they were to be provided to every council member in case, and I believe it already has been, although we don't have the opportunity to read it right now. But we will have the opportunity. In addition, we have a provision for having it come two hours ahead of time, and it did not do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, is it possible for you to restate the motion? Because our recollection is that the motion did not say what Counselor Alcacer said. So I just wanted to make sure we heard it correctly.
Uh, okay. I believe her motion was to not read any comments from citizens to be heard who do not live in the city or own a business in the city, but include them in the record. Yes, that's what I understood. And there was a second by Ms. Charles. And maybe I forgot to say included in the record. But thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you definitely said that. And I'm reading, writing it right now. And then provide it to the city council. So let's take a vote on that. Ms. Posely, if you'll take the roll, please.
I'm in favor of them not be read.
Yes, I'm in favor of not reading.
Counselor Alcacer?
I agree with the foregoing.
Counselor Hody?
I agree as well.
Counselor Bradshaw?
No, I support the First Amendment.
Thank you. Okay, the, uh, the motion passes four eyes and one nay. Okay, so that's all that I have to read in Citizens to Be Heard. So we'll move then to, oh, did you want, I'm sorry. Did you have a citizens to be heard? Okay, before we move on, Ms. Bacon, go right ahead. I'll add you to the list.
Yes, I just wanted to know why Counsel Alcacer recalled, Counsel Alcacer recalled Counsel Charles are not attending the meetings in person?
Uh, we all are. That is, that is their option, according to, to Mr. Zack.
How long is that going to go on?
Uh, as long as the, and Mr. Zack, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, because we had a discussion. As long as the rules are suspended, they are able to attend.
Are they using the video? Are they actually coming online where we can see them as they respond?
No, they're not. They're just, they're just-
Will we make sure that they at least do that, Mayor? So that we can see them as they're attending the meeting? Even if they aren't attending?
I'd like to get the city attorney to weigh in on this, but I believe the city attorney said when the rules were suspended, they could just be on telephonic.
Exactly, that's, that was what I got today. If they're, if the, the rules are suspended. So the governor, whenever he suspends these rules or says they're no longer in effect, and we go back, then, uh, everybody needs to be seen and heard.
A lot of the residents would like to see that these-
You'll need to get to the mic so we can-
As these recalled councils try to remove, um, sitting council and mayor, that they, that we can see them as they respond. These are important issues, and we need to see them.
All right, thanks for noting that. All right. All right, then, if there's no other comments from the chambers, then we will move to citizens, excuse me, announcements by the council and mayor. And we'll start with Counselor Charles.
Well, I just wish to, uh, give a good thank you to the Lord above that we're all healthy and safe. And we will continue attending the meetings as we do now, until we can come into chambers.
All right, thank you. And Ms., Counselor Rodri, Rodriguez, you're next.
I just want to say, I'm glad to see the people in chambers that are here. And also, I wanted a second on that Officer Amadine. I spoke to Chief, I think it was about a week to two weeks ago, about some traffic issues on Handsome Lake in Seneca. And Officer Amadine was on it, stopping people left and right. They were running those stop signs, um, at the four-way. So I was very happy to see that he was working so hard, as he normally does. And then also, I got a chance this weekend to work with Mr. Badio. He's running for Constable of Precinct 2 in a program called Voices, which they gather food and donate food and take food to veterans and others. And it was just an honor to be able to participate as the mother of an Army person and as the daughter of a World War II veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Alcacer? Thank you. Counselor Alcacer? Ms., Ms. Crystal? Can she hear me?
Hold on.
Okay.
Counselor Alcacer, can you hear us?
Now I can.
Okay. Uh, if you'll, do you have any announcements this evening, Ms., Counselor Alcacer? If you'll, if you'll begin, thank you.
Couple of them. Uh, I wanted to, uh, thank the fire department for putting the buckets outside. About two weeks ago, when my husband and I dropped about 10 bags of things off, it was inside. And I said, nobody even knows it's here. So I was very happy to see it come out. And I hope people utilize it, both dropping off and picking up. And I wanted to thank the city staff, and particularly the police and fire and administration for the work they do constantly in responding to citizens' needs, whatever they are. It's been incredible, and I thank you all. I'm glad we have you.
Thank you. And Counselor Hody?
Good evening. I just wanted to give kudos to the staff for the shop local tab on the website, which I read today. And it has, uh, our businesses that unfortunately are not able to open right now. It's the Aquarium, Carvel Skate Center, Bowling Alley, Long Tab Brewing, Pixel Portal Arcade, Essay Fun Zone, and Amazing Play. And I'm hoping that soon they will be able to. And I also want to thank the citizens that are patronizing our businesses, the drive-throughs, picking up lunch, picking up items to freeze and eat the next day. There's a lot of them that are doing that. And it's really helpful when you do support them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hody. Mr., Counselor Bradshaw?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been thinking a lot this week, um, that this, this year, this week marks the one-year mark since I was elected, or sworn in as a city councilor. And I had a lot of hope when I was elected that we could make positive changes in the community, fix our roads, our parks, bring in businesses. And I have to say, it has not been what I expected. We saw earlier at a presentation that over $145,000 was spent on the Benny Martinez 312 hearing and, and trials. And it's very disappointing that that's what I've spent my time working on. And there's an item on the agenda tonight. Here we go again. It's very disappointing. And I just want to say that I wish that as things start to get back to normal with, uh, the businesses opening up and coronavirus hopefully subsiding, I, I really wish that we could get some, our city back to normal as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I have quite a number of announcements that I would like to make to our citizens and, um, visitors and staff. And staff probably knows more about it. But anyway, I did, I have been writing weekly on the COVID. And, uh, people have contacted me saying, Mayor, where do I go to get tested? And of course, it had always been at, like, Joe Freeman Coliseum. And I think a weekend or two ago is at Gollum Road. Well, we have a, a place at Renew Prescription Bandera, which is at 6428 Bandera Road in the Health Texas Clinic. And I called the manager today, and that, because I, I just needed some more information to share with the, with the citizens and staff. Monday through Friday, 10 to 2, they're open. And they have a, it's a pilot program from the Department of the Human Health Services for underinsured and no insurance until the end of May. But they're trying to get it extended. And I said, well, you know, do they call this number with the number that I had listed in the, in the letter? And he said, no, go to, do I need a COVID-19 test? And it's just, you know, put all of that in there, www.doinneedacovidtest, and it'll pop up and you'll answer questions. And if you qualify, they'll give you an appointment date there. And it's a curbside testing. And so, but they are looking for people who have symptoms or have been exposed, even though the Metro Health has opened up their testing to asymptomatic people, people who don't have any symptoms that want to get tested. So, but that, this is not that facility, which is just right down the street. I think it's next to Wing Daddy's or somewhere around there. I, I also attended a Alamo area Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting yesterday. We're also online. And that's getting used to that, because it's a 22-member board, so it's rather large. But I did want to make an announcement. These are two Leon Valley topics. The board moved to, uh, move the Leon Valley hike and bike trail, $933,000 grant, from this year to next year, because we're not ready. But again, they're just, um, moving it out so that we still can, um, secure that grant once we're, we're ready. And then, the good news is that they put in the long, this is, um, the, the regional AAMPO in our long, and that's in our short-range plan, the, just the hike and bike track. But the long-term, um, plan for Bandera Road project that's being funded by Prop 1 and Prop 7, they put $79 million aside for Bandera Road. And that is really good news. It's not in the short range, but at least they're recognizing that we'll develop a plan and, and they're, they're trying to secure that funding. So I was really happy to hear that. And I'm not sure, I'm assuming it's the same function that you and I attended on Saturday, Ms., Ms. Rodriguez. But, um, I was invited to attend, and I didn't know who all was, was responsible, but it was, uh, feeding the vets. And this was Stephen Price, resident and a veteran. And he called me, and I thought he organized it, but I'm sure he had, you know, Badio. And anyway, Ray Lopez showed up, our, our state rep, and our state Senator Jose Menendez showed up. And there was a lot of other volunteers, Meals on Wheels. They, they were there coordinating the 35 veterans who were receiving. I think it was two meals on Saturday, two meals on Sunday, a big box of donated items that Mr. Badio had gotten, like 24 eggs. I mean, it was just incredible, the generosity. And, um, uh, the Meals on Wheels complimented our, they said that our police and fire were reaching out to them, identifying the people that they have on their list so that we could help them. And really encouraged us, if we have anybody else, to let them know, because they don't want anybody to go hungry. And I thought that was really nice. But it was, it was a very nice event. And, and, and I want to thank Mr. Price and anybody else for organizing that. But it was a great effort. And in fact, uh, everybody's hair was really long, you know? Because nobody could get a haircut. And, um, the comment was, this was our first outing since the COVID. This was with the state rep at the state. And it kind of felt good to, you know, be able to be out there. So anyway, it was, it was a fun time. I really enjoyed it. Census 2020. If you haven't finished your census, it takes 10 minutes. Please do so. We're still lagging behind. And I know they've moved the goalpost a little bit further out. But if you know of anybody, any relative, please encourage them. Remember, those federal dollars, based on our, our numbers, come back to us. And so, um, it's very, very important that we have a good turnout, a good response rate. So thank you. And again, the city manager mentioned it, but there are a lot of people that are hurting. And there's, there is help out there. It just takes some effort to get it. But rental assistance, um, is, is out there from the county. They have set aside, uh, they got $79.1 million from the federal government under the CARES Act. So they're turning it around and trying to get it out to the people for rental assistance, small business loans and grants. And anyway, just check our website or go to the www.bear.org and ask for help. I'm sure Mr. Cox will help as well, so.
Interestingly enough, Mr. Cox, just so you know, this is kind of interesting. The program that you were talking about, you have to be here three years. So Amazing Play did apply for it, but they don't qualify because of the three years, but they would qualify for our program tonight.
Oh, good, good, okay.
So I wanted to help you out, clarify that for you.
Okay. Yes, I didn't know, I don't know all the nitty-gritties. I just wanted to get the information out to people. Also, just, um, I want to, you know, again, thank all of our healthcare workers, our first responders, police, fire, I mean, essential workers. I mean, they, they are putting their lives on the line. And my husband was looking at something on the internet this morning, and he came in to me, he says, Chris, did you know that the bubonic plague in the 1200s was around for 400 years? And I'm like, no. And so, you know, this, this virus could be with us a long time, especially since, and since we, until we get a vaccine, which could be, you know, who knows, three, four years, maybe, maybe sooner. But anyway, so this is our new normal. And, um, so, um-
Clearly.
I'm sorry? Somebody's talking? So this is our-
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, could I finish, and then I'll let you chime in, if you don't mind? So, um-
Well, you can't hear, Mayor. You can't always hear.
Oh, you can't hear? Can you hear now?
Now we can hear, but-
Okay, thank you. I just need to get closer to the mic. Thank you. I appreciate you letting me know. So anyway, um, we, we have a weekly mayor's meeting on the COVID. And one of the questions last Thursday was, what do we do? What do we tell our citizens? Because they're, you know, social, they're, we're relaxing all of the restrictions. And anyway, Mayor DeLeon from Balconies asked that. And the Metropolitan Health Director, or Assistant Director, said, "We can't emphasize enough to follow those four measures. Social distance, wash your hands, wear a mask, and stay home if you're sick and get tested." So, um, it's with us. And I don't know about you, the economy is open and traffic is getting bad again. So, anyway. And then I heard something on the radio. New Zealand has a, what's called a social bubble. And I'm going to look it up. I did, I only heard it. But this is how to gather with 10 people or less safely. So I'm going to try to down, you know, try to find that and then try to report on that as well. So, uh, because again, we're social animals. We want to be with people. And so, uh, but we need to do it safely. And we don't want to spread the disease. Okay, Happy Memorial Day. Can you believe it? It's Monday? Where's this year gone to? Did you zoom by? So be safe, be healthy, and enjoy your weekend. All right, thank you. All right, now, we're moving then to Agenda Item Number 6, which is the Consent Agenda. And y'all can see, those of you here in chambers and of course, our council, we put a lot of things in the Consent Agenda, because we have a lot of work to get done. And, um, before I ask if any counselor wants to move anything out for discussion, I need to make a clarification, as per Ms. Posely. On Agenda Item 6.3, um, there are appointments for board members and alternates. And as per Ms. Posely's guidance, if we could please amend that to only appoint board members- members and not alternates. Alternates will come back because there might be an alternate that could be moved up to a board member spot, but we don't know that yet. So that would be my request on that one, if we could have that motion to reflect that change. And then also, you know, I'm seeing pool advisory committee, tree advisory committee, community advisory, I mean, in all of our committees. And we usually have them here and we usually tell them, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the work. And so I just want to thank all these committees because they're not going to be able to be here today to give us their report, but their report is online. And we, we really greatly appreciate the effort that you give on each one of those committees to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. So thank you so much to all the committee members. So with that said, we've got 11 items. Is anyone like to pull anything for discussion? Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
I do not want to pull anything for discussion. I'd like to move that we accept Consent Agenda with the adjustment you made on number 3.
Okay. Can I just see if there's any other counselor that wants to move anything out before we make that motion? But thank you.
No problem.
Just let me be sure. Counselor Charles, Counselor Alcasar, did you have anything you wanted to be moved?
I don't. As a Counselor, Charles, no, I don't.
Okay.
Counselor Alcasar doesn't, and now second.
Okay.
Counselor Rodriguez is.
So we have a, thank you very much. We have a motion by Counselor Rodriguez and a second by Counselor Alcasar to adopt a Consent Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.11 with the amendment at 6.3 as discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, the motion does carry. Okay, thank you very much. We move then to Agenda Item Number 7, Ordinance. And remember, these are emergency ordinances and they only need one read. And we're going to begin tonight with Agenda 7.1. And Ms. Posely, if you'll please read that ordinance. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City, City Council of the City of Leon Valley, Texas, extending a declaration of local disaster, establishing rules and regulations of duration of the disaster, restricting certain activities, repealing all previous ordinances, and establishing penalties for violations.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief, and welcome. Lots of new orders.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, absolutely. And like last time, I apologize for you just getting this stuff so late. Again, we got the order last night and so I stayed here last night pretty late, kind of going over it and making sure that we were updating it so our citizens and y'all would have the latest and greatest. So it didn't get to you over the weekend because he didn't, he didn't release it until yesterday afternoon. So the purpose is to actually go through and, and change our ordinance to reflect the changes by the governor and by Bear County Commissioners Court, Judge Wolf. You have the new governor's order. Since we last met, you have Governor's Order 21, and now that's already been superseded with Governor's Order 23. And so if you read the packet, most of the stuff in there was about 21. And so I left some of it in here when we're going through, just so you could see what the changes were since the last time we met, and it would be on record as well, and then the changes that come about as 20, for 23. And ultimately, the goal is to change our ordinance to adopt both of those and the specific things that are germane to just Leon Valley is mainly what we're going to be discussing today. So got a timeline. These are all the ordinances that have gone through. I won't go over them again. Basically, the last time we met, we were talking about the Bear County Commissioners Order NW5, which was your Stay Home Work Safe Order, which has been superseded since then. We talked about, on April 13th, we passed a new ordinance, which is 202019. And then on the 27th of April, that was where Governor's Order 18 was put in place. And then on 29th was your, your Bear County Order NW-07, which was updated. So on May 5th, we updated our ordinance to reflect those. And then the exact same day, right before we came in here, actually, the governor made the changes in GA 21. We've talked about some of them here. We didn't have all of them handy. Since then, we, we've been able to go through and look at them and those things have changed now even since then because of 23. So on May 18th, just yesterday, the governor released GA 23, which is related to expanded opening of Texas in response to the COVID-19. So this is a reminder, you know, as we talk about all this open stuff, as we talk about the fact that all these businesses are open, the, the governor and the president and your, your, you know, Bear County Commissioners Court, they keep reminding us that while you are allowed to get out there and do it, just like y'all are allowed to come in here, there are certain people that should not. And so, you know, just because somebody wants somebody to come in here or force somebody to come in here, it's really against what they're trying to tell us all, and that is stay home. If we can stay home, stay home. And if you're in one of those high categories, which we have council members that are, they should be staying home. And that's exactly what the order says. And so I won't go over this whole thing, but except where necessary to provide or obtain covered services, which are new, that's a new category. It used to be essential services. There used to be essential businesses and then went to open businesses. And now they've got a category that just covers them all as covered services. They want to still minimize social gatherings and minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. Obviously, none of us live together, so we should all be doing what we're doing. People over the age of 65, however, are strongly encouraged to stay at home as much as possible to maintain appropriate distance from any member of the household who has been out of the residence in the previous 14 days. And that's pretty hard when you've got grandkids and great-grandkids that you want to see. And if leaving the home, to implement social distancing and to practice good hygiene, environmental cleanliness, and sanitation. So even though all these businesses we're going to talk about are allowed to be open, there are a lot of restrictions and a lot of checklist that they have to abide by according to either the president or the governor or the county. And so those things with social distancing and the CDC guidelines on sanitary guidelines, all those things are still required. It's not just poof, they're open. There's a lot of things that they have to do to, to be open. And there's a lot of rules. And so we're working closely to make sure that our businesses know those rules. We sent them out. I sent them out last night about 9:30, 9 o'clock, 9:30 by the time I, I got them all put together and we sent them out to all our businesses to make sure they all understood. And we definitely want them to open up and we definitely want them to succeed for their sake, for their, their family's sake, and for the city's sake as well. So we're doing everything we possibly can. And I'll show you some stuff in a little bit about what the city's been doing to help out these businesses. So I'll talk real quick about Governor's Order 21. And in red, you'll see the dates that these things went, went into effect because just like last night's order, you had stuff that went into effect immediately last night. You had stuff that went into effect on this coming Friday and you have stuff that's going into effect on the 31st of May, but it's all in one order. And so GA 21 allowed on May 8th, your dining restaurants, store, retail, movie theaters, shopping malls, museums, libraries, your wedding venues, except churches, they're not restricting the churches, hair and nail salons, tanning salons, and swimming pools to operate at 25% with restrictions. And when I say they're allowed, that doesn't mean they have to open. That doesn't mean we have to open our pool. It just says that if we open our pool, we can, but we have to abide by all these restrictions. And that that one was 25% on May 8th. Also allowed gyms to open up, which was yesterday, fitness facilities, manufacturing services, office buildings to open and operate at 25%, but still with restrictions. And so they all, I'm sure you saw it on TV last night, the gyms were ecstatic and we are too, to, to see them coming back open. So they still maintain restrictions. And remember, this is the last order. It's not the current order. We'll talk about the current order in a minute. On eating or drinking at bars and food courts, bars or establishments that serve alcohol primarily, but they could sell food and alcohol to Gold, massage establishments, tattoo studios, which we don't have, piercing studios, which we have some, and sexually-oriented businesses, which we don't have. And our biggest one, it kind of captured all the eight businesses that had to remain closed, are these interactive amusement venues. And that, that title has changed every one of them, come up with a new title for it. It used to be indoor entertainment venues and now this, it's interactive amusement venues. And so ours were the aquariums, your bowling alleys, skating rinks, and the arcade, as you, you heard Pixel Portal talk about earlier. So Governor's Order 23, which was released just last night, allowed the immediate opening of massage establishments. So it was like we had to get our officers out immediately to understand that they can be open. All personal care and beauty services, including tattoo, piercing, hair removal, and hair loss treatment services, and childcare services other than youth camps. Automatically, immediately, when he did his presentation and the order was signed, all these things opened last, of last night. It also allowed, starting May 22nd, so coming this Friday, dining restaurants can increase to 50% of occupancy. And so what that means is they're not seeing the spike that they were concerned with because everybody's doing a great job. Bars can open up to 25% of their occupancy this Friday. The aquarium's going to be allowed to open up to 25% of its occupancy. Your bowling alleys, bingo, simulcast racing, and skating rinks to 25% of their occupancy. Drive-in concerts, I didn't know they had them, but they are allowed to open up again. And then amateur sporting events with no access to your general public, meaning you can't have spectators. They can just go and, and play the games. That's effective this Friday, May 22nd. So on the 31st of May, on the same order, GA 23, professional sports with no spectators. So you could possibly see, and there's a bunch of rules, don't forget. There's a lot of restrictions also put on those professional teams that they have to do. And you could see the Spurs come back and play. You could see, you know, the minor league baseball come back and play and those types of things. But it's without spectators at this point. Youth camps, including summer camps, regardless whether they're a day camp or overnight camps. And then youth sports programs, but the interesting part about that is while they can start practicing on the 31st, they cannot open back up to games until June 15th. So we have been in contact already with Northwest Little League. Those, the guys are doing great over there. They're sending us a plan that they want us to sit down with them and approve, that's their health and safety plan. And so we're, we're extremely happy to do that. Our fire department chief and I will go and we'll meet with them and we'll make sure that we go over everything and that we got a good plan for the safety of their, of those kids and the families.
Chief, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is not restricted to a number?
So.
You see what I'm saying? It doesn't say 25%. I mean, can you have 100 kids at the Northwest Little League? What about the parents in the stands? You know, they love to watch their kids play. Is there, is there more to it than this?
There, there, there are some restrictions.
Okay.
But this one did not restrict them to numbers.
Oh, okay.
That one specifically, those two specifically didn't restrict them to numbers. There were restrictions on them meeting health and safety restrictions for the CDC guidelines, but there were no restriction on numbers. And so like Northwest Little League said, the president said, we're, we're going to keep the, you know, on, the team that's coming on the field next and their family are going to have to stay in their cars till these guys get off the field, get in their cars and leave, the next group can get out. So that they're working a staggered plan so that you don't have as many people there, families sit together, but they're going to try to get everybody else to space apart the six feet and blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
So there's probably, I haven't seen it yet, but I know I read some best practices that they're looking at. And, and you're going to see for a little bit at least, no touching, like with the gloves or getting that close, you're going to probably see some of that as well.
Okay.
So, but we'll wait for his plan and see exactly.
Very good.
What he comes, what he comes up with. And those things are, just to be clear, those are things that we can't regulate. We are just wanting to work with them closely to ensure the safety of those kids and their families.
Sure.
Restrictions also on inter, well, the restrictions continued on GA 23 and Pixel Portal talked about it. The very first one listed by the governor under the interactive entertainment venues was arcades. And we were kind of disappointed about that because that's the last businesses in Leon Valley effective this Friday. That would be the last business that's not allowed to open. But we have three of them. We have Amazing Play, you have SA Fun Zone, both of them came up and talked today, and you have Pixel Porter, Pixel Portal also. So you have three businesses are going to be allowed, not allowed to open back up. We don't have amusement parks or water parks, but as you can see, SeaWorld and Fiesta Texas are not going to be able to open anytime soon.
Chief, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interrupt. I know I had asked you about our playgrounds. Does the playground, are you going to discuss that or does it fall anywhere in there?
So the playgrounds still have to stay closed and they, we can open up certain things, but playgrounds are not one of them at this point. And, and your, your weight equipment and those types of things that are out in the public have to be left off limits right now as well. Okay? The, the one thing that is still off limits and probably going to remain off limits for quite some time are your nursing homes, your state-supported living centers, assisted living facilities, your long-term care facilities, unless it's for, to provide critical assistance. So basically, families and, and everybody else are not supposed to be going into these places. And we have quite a few in Leon Valley that are, that are group homes and things like that. So we, we definitely have just lately seen an issue with one of them that we, we, just today, as a matter of fact, with COVID. It's our first, first problem with them. So and we'll get you more information on that. It's the run that the chief was just talking about right now. So, and then the other thing was in-person classroom attendance at public schools. Unfortunately for the kids, he did release it where summer school can be put in place. So doesn't say a date, but, but when they're going to start it and those types of things. But the interesting thing here is your, your public schools had to remain closed, but your private schools could open back up, even though they urged them to follow the state guidelines as well. So if your kid went to St. Luke's or something like that, there's, they could open back up.
So summer school is open for just private schools?
For everybody.
For every, and public schools?
And public schools.
And public. But in-person classroom attendance at public school is still restricted?
Until summer schedule, whenever that starts.
Until the summer school, the schedule starts.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Private schools and.
So our ordinance 2020-20, which I thought was pretty cool, is what we here, here today to really talk about. All those other things are still restricted under our, our ordinance because we're adopting GA 23, which is what we talked about, and NW-07, which is going to be in conflict with GA 23 because it hasn't been updated yet. So by the time we get together the next time, we'll probably have NW-9 or whatever it's going to be that we have to include. But the bottom line on that is the state's order, GA 23, is controlling in our ordinance. And so if there's any conflicts, then GA 23 is what will, what will be controlling. So these are the things that currently we have closed in our ordinance. City administration, city hall, planning and zoning, municipal court, the cashiers, city library, senior center, the pools, and the library. Some of these things can be opened back up at a very restricted number, and we're going to talk about those and get y'all's opinion on how we want to go forward on that. So the recommended change is right off the bat is adopting GA 23 so that all of those things that are currently in the governor's order now become part of our order as well. And it's in your packet as Exhibit A. The second thing is adopting Bear County Commissioners Court, Judge Wolf's Executive Order NW-07, and it's incorporated in your packet as Exhibit B. And then Exhibit C to reflect the following. We're looking at, or we're actually bringing up to y'all a consideration of a limited reopening of most city functions to include city hall, the city administration, planning and zoning, city cashiers, and city library. What we mean by, by limited is, one, pick a date in the future, and the city manager is throwing out June 1st. That's when, if you look at the little spreadsheet that was on your desk, a lot of them are, are looking at that date and, and actually, the governor's actually said there'll be some more things that come about around that same time period. So June 1st is one of our dates we'd like to throw out for y'all to consider. When I say limited, we're still going to keep our employees behind the glass so we won't have anybody sitting up front greeting people. We want to maintain that, that distance between, for their, the, the public's safety and our safety as well. And so we'll still do a lot of things through, and urge people to do everything through the computer that they can, online. And, and we'll continue with the route that's been working very well. We're, we're not seeing, except in municipal court, and we'll talk about municipal court in a minute. We're not seeing a big backlog in, in things because everybody's still working, whether they're working at, at home or they're working in, in the office. Everybody's still working and everybody's getting all of the stuff done. If it's a permit, the, the, the girl's on it. She's, she's good and she's, but she's doing it from home and she can. Yvonne, who's here tonight, stays on top of the water payments. She can do it all from home. So technology's really opened up some doors and we've, we've opened up some of our eyes on some of the stuff that can be done from home. The stuff that can't be done from home, like police work and the fire department, we're all here just like we normally would. So we do believe that, that it's time, as we see everything else opening up, that our government should also open up accordingly. And we're looking at, or asking for a date of June 1st. A limited reopening of municipal court. When I say limited reopening, at this point, you can't open it until our safety plan is put in place through the, the judge, the district judge that's actually been appointed to handle all this stuff. And so we've put, we've, we've got our safety plan. We've had our meetings, uh, presented the map. Um, so we're hopefully getting approval in the very near future. Right now, the earliest that you can actually open up is June 15th. So, um.
Excuse me? Did you have a question or a comment? Uh, Ms. Alcacer, go ahead.
On the exhibit, it's showing the city library and then is, uh, limited reopening and then closed? The library, is there some difference that I'm not aware of there? And library is misspelled?
Not on ours, ma'am. So I've got it in both sections because it was, it was, uh, we think it can be open, but it's, but really we want to, we want to talk about it staying closed until San Antonio opens there. So you have two options and that's the, that's the one we put in there for, to give you two options on those. And we'll talk more about that in just a second. Municipal court, um, right now we're the second city, uh, in the area that went to a, uh, tried a system to have court on Zoom. Uh, our judge, uh, has been working closely with us and we had our first successful one. Did a great job, um, no major issues, except, uh, most people didn't sign on that would get, had got their notice to sign on. And so, uh, normally we have about 55% that show up for their court date. We probably had about 35% that showed up, uh, on Zoom. So, uh, we'll continue to work on making sure that, uh, people have access, giving them, our plan includes giving them an option to do it by Zoom if they have the technology to do it or to come in. And we have a huge production on that day, uh, to provide for safety of everybody. So, uh, right now we could not open municipal court fully, um, if we wanted to because of the order that's in place right now. And so, uh, when I say limited reopening right now and until, at least till the next meeting, probably the next two meetings, it's going to be, uh, reopening by Zoom only in which you've already approved and we just want to continue doing that. On our keep closed, uh, we're recommending the senior center, uh, to stay closed. Um, the vast majority of the people, well, I would say almost every one of the people that, that go to that, uh, senior center are in that category that, uh, we really need them to stay home. And I think they all agree with it. Um, uh, it's definitely would be a very bad problem if one person in that room got it. It would affect the whole group and drastically. Uh, so we also are looking at some, um, um, renovation of that area as well in the very near future. So it might be just a good time to, to give it, uh, to knock that stuff out. And then when they come back and all this hopefully is over in the near future, uh, it's a nice, beautiful facility for them to come back to. Um, the library, I gave you a, a document, uh, that's got some phased in approaches. Uh, right now, San Antonio is not opening their library and they do not have a date, um, as of today, when, uh, Rosie talked to them of when they will open the library. Um, they would prefer to leave the library closed for the whole summer season. And there's a reason behind it is because you're having to, um, disinfect those books and have to keep them, uh, after you disinfected just about, I guess, every page from my understanding, uh, have to leave it for several, several days sitting there and not being able to be utilized. And so it's, it's not an easy process just to open back up. But if we do open back up or when we do open back up, that's San Antonio's plan. We believe that, that we should follow the plan, not because it's San Antonio, but because they surround us. And any changes that we make that are different to what they do, it causes us problems. Uh, because people don't understand that they're not at a San Antonio library. Uh, and they come over thinking that it's no different that Cody or wherever. And so, um, Rosie is asking that if we do open the library and you choose a limited reopening, that we reopen it to phase one only and not just have it open completely. Because, uh, right now with San Antonio being closed, we would be inundated. And, and we can only, uh, it's phase two, phase two.
I was going to say.
We can, I'm sorry, phase two. Um, and we can only, um, open up to 25% at this point anyway. So, uh, she's really, really concerned and she, she really wanted us to express and she's the one to put that together. So, um, we'll, we'll try to answer any questions you have on it though.
Also just got a, an email from, or not just a few hours ago, from Teresa Braider, um, basically echoing Rosie's concern because we've already been in the situation where Teresa's been at the library where San Antonio library is closed and we all saw what happened then. And so Teresa's very scared, um, of us opening the library in any way that San Antonio does not.
Do we know when, like, the, they'll make that decision?
No, the, the, the head of the library told Rosie that she's advocating right now to stay closed. And so, um, I would say that this will be a big topic of discussion on Thursday at, uh, at San Antonio City Council. Uh, I know that, that the Commissioners Court hasn't opened up anything, but I think Bibliotech has been opened. But, um, but, um, it could, they could make a decision on Thursday at their meeting, but it could also be that they put it off until a further date. So we just don't know.
You know, I was just, I mean, I understand the, the safety concern, but gosh, this is just not to have a library when, you know, it's, it's, it's such a key. But I was wondering if, even if we opened up like one or two days a week separated and cleaned in between or were, were they looking at that or any kind of options like that? I mean, I'm just trying to, kind of a, like a compromise.
I, what she told us, mayor, what they're concerned about is because what you see, uh, the books having to be quarantined, every single book that somebody touches has to be sprayed and quarantined for 72 hours right now. And so.
And how do you know that? I mean, how do you know which book has been touched?
That's exactly right. And so that's why.
And is that a CDC guideline?
If you look in number two, um, I don't know. I just know San Antonio is doing that for the quarantine for the books. Um, and so their concern is that such a small staff, how do they follow people around, um, trying to figure out what they touched?
Okay.
I can tell you the interactive, um, indoor entertainment facilities, whatever you call them today. Uh, the, one of the things that they have to do is after everything is touched, if there's a railing, they recommend you, you block the railing off because after everybody touches it, you need to clean it. Um, so basically you're inter, anything that's interactive that gets touched, like at the mall, there's a lot of restrictions. You can't have, you know, these large areas where people touch everything, all off limits. So while the mall is open, you have a lot of restrictions. And so these restrictions would really, if you look at them, having to clean every book, every, every, um, computer.
That's an impossibility with the, with the books.
It really is.
I just realized that. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just, boy, it's just such a, it just hits really hard not to have a library that we can go to. That's all.
So I'll.
Oh, I pulled it up so they could.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
So just my last slide, uh, before y'all can start discussing all those deliberating.
Is that on the pool?
No, I just, I really want you to, you know, understand everybody, the.
Can I, can I read? I have two, I have two things on the pool. So I didn't know where you, where you, we wanted that to be read. And, and you're saying that the city of San Antonio has, I think Ms. Kinsler, you had sent that to us, has decided not to open their pools for the entire summer?
Exactly.
Is that right? Okay.
We, we just got an update email. The pools are still closed for the summer. Um, if during the middle of the summer, they decide to open any pools up, it will just be a few of their pools. Um, a certain number, but right now all pools are still closed with the city of San Antonio.
So your recommendation is that we follow the city of San Antonio's guideline? So would that mean that say midsummer, we would be able to open up a pool?
Um, they've not said they're going to open up midsummer. They just said depending on.
If, yeah. I say if, but I mean, will, will our contract allow that, that we have with this?
They're willing, absolutely. I have signed nothing and told them that until the council says it's.
Just like some flexibility here.
We do, we do.
It's going to be a hot summer and these kids really need to go to the library to cool off and go to the pool to cool off. So anyway.
If you look at the.
I'm not going to be sick at the pool.
Yeah.
Look at the spreadsheet that, uh, that Christina McLeovia put up for you guys. Um, you know, some of these pools are saying they're going to open in the near future, in, in June, middle of June, uh, July. Some of them are saying they're just going to stay closed altogether. Uh, so, and, and some of them are a little different than us. You know, what actions they take only affects them. What actions we take actually has an impact on the San Antonio area around us. And so if pools aren't open in San Antonio, you're going to have the influx into our pools. And you're going to have, uh, you're going to have issues because your pool's percentage can only be right now 25% at this time anyway. And so, uh, it's, it's going to be a problem. And I think on one of these, uh, they actually said, um, if we can find lifeguards, and that's another problem that the, the companies are having is actually finding employees. Uh, and what we talked to a couple of these and they said, the pool companies are saying, we, we can't even find employees to actually come in and work the pools. And so that's another problem that we would have to consider if we, if we sign the contract in the, in the near future.
Well, since these are pool related, let me go ahead and read these if you don't mind until we, and then we could go on. Um, this is from Lynn Joseph and she says, I believe it's too early to open pools, senior city, senior center and public gathering areas. Since the recent openings in San Antonio, we are seeing a rise of COVID-19 cases again. We are seeing more and more people not wearing masks or keeping distancing. It will only encourage bad habits. It's too risky to put the old and young at risk. And this is from Ann Sawyer in, uh, Leon Valley. And she says, considering the pools, please open at least one, possibly both during the summer. I understand that Forest Oaks needs 6,000 in repairs that would take about a week to complete. Perhaps better to open the Leon Valley pool at the beginning than do repairs if there's enough interest in people going to the pool. And I'm for the season passes and gate entrance fees continued from last year. Since the rule would be only 50 people in the pool and there hasn't been that many at either pool, I don't expect there would be a problem with turning people away.
I don't know where that 50 comes from because our pools can't handle 200 people.
Yeah.
There's no way.
Okay. All right. And, um, Mr. Mata, do you have a, a comment specifically on the pool? Okay, well, let's go ahead and take it then, since we are on the pool. And, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize we have to do the rigmarole here. Oh, yeah. Okay, I should have waited. Okay, I'll remember that next time. Thank you. We're learning. Okay. All right. And so what is your comment, Mr. Mata, on the pool?
Uh, Eric Mata, Forest Oaks, Skinnerfield, just, um, wanted to speak specifically about what the chief of police mentioned about not being able to find lifeguards. Funny enough, I was heading to New Braunfels with my daughter on Saturday. And as we drove up Evers, looked over to my left and there was about 10 to 12 lifeguards, young lifeguards, training in the Forest Oaks pool. I went ahead and pulled around and asked them and they said, we believe it's going to open, so we're training for that. So I don't know where the information comes from that there's not lifeguards. There was plenty of lifeguards that would cover one pool opening. And, you know, again, what, what are we doing here? I mean, do we have to follow everything San Antonio does? I'm just not sure. I'm, I'm not for it. I, I don't appreciate when staff comes up and assumes and, you know, acts like they're, they're the authority on it. Obviously they were training there for a reason and they said they were training to open up at that pool.
Um, Mr. Mata, I'm actually the one who authorized, uh, the company to train at the pool. And that's not correct. They're training so that in the event, according to the owner, in the event pools do open up, they've got certified lifeguards. Um, they had lower attendance and training this year than they've had in the past, but that was not about the Leon Valley pool. We just said that they could use our pool for the training because we've done that in the past for them.
I, I did speak to them and I spoke to the head lifeguard who was there.
Right, so I've been dealing with the owner.
She said that she believed that pool was going to open and, and that those lifeguards, there would be some of those lifeguards that could serve at that pool. So I, I just, you know, I hate to do this, but you know, when we have staff that come up and represent, misrepresent stuff, I, I just think as citizens, we need to speak to it. Okay? I'm the father of a young, the 12-year-old who, you know, what are we going to expect their summers to be like? You know, come on, guys. This is, this is not affected the young. We know that. You know, we know the issue with pools. Think, you know, it, it bugs me because I, I, you know, we hear so much about the limited budget and, you know, there's so many other things going on and yet we, we can't be a little more open about issues that affect families, affect kids that have been, they've been at home for months now with limited ability to get out. You know, I, I just wish some of you guys, whether you were parents at some point of young or not, I wish you'd be a little more sympathetic. Okay?
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Do appreciate it. Okay. All right. Any other comments from anybody in the chambers on the pool or the library while we're, or, or June 1st as a potential date to reopen city hall? I think that was another. Okay. If you'll continue, please. Thank you.
Just want to acknowledge some of the comment. I'm not sure what we misrepresented, um, because I didn't represent anything except state what is actually on the sheet that people are saying the other cities are having problems finding lifeguards. It's not us personally and I don't know, um, but that is a fact. Um, we can, we can pass that information on to, uh, to him so he understands what city said that. Cause that's all that was represented.
All right. So if you'll continue on the discussion, please. Thank you.
Um, so just, just to make sure everybody fully understands what your staff has been doing uh, to help out, uh, your community and your businesses. And this is for your, specifically for your, your businesses as well. Uh, it's, you know, we, we went out from day one, made those contacts and we've been keeping in contact with these businesses, uh, the entire time. Um, emails, phone calls, personal visits, making sure that if they have any needs that we can help with, we, we are helping with them. Uh, put the signs out, uh, after we, we came to y'all to waive the sign ordinance and put the signs out. Uh, if you go to the businesses that requested the signs and the ones where they're out, um, they said they immediately saw a big, um, turn in their business at that point. So they're very appreciative. The digital sign up on, uh, on Bendere Road was allowed to, to continue to advertise our businesses and they did it for free. And that's a public service because we are partners with them that, uh, they actually, um, took no money and said, we're going to advertise the businesses that are open, that were open at that time. And so it was very important that we got that out there for our community. And we put the right away signs in there talking about support the Leon Valley businesses and all, um, and reminding everybody as they drive through the community that, uh, the businesses are open and we need everybody to support them. Um, we've constantly in our social media posts, almost on a daily basis, we talk about supporting the businesses and if there's a, an opening that, uh, is impacting like we did with the haircut places, all those things, uh, we definitely are out there pushing those, those for, uh, those businesses. Uh, we highlighted those open businesses on social media and we continue to do so. As we talked about today, the little shop, uh, local that Councilman Hody talked about, uh, is still on there. And, uh, we're making sure everybody understands the businesses are still out there. Uh, we waived the water disconnect fees because like everybody knows that, uh, there's, there's problems with paying for a lot of the bills, as you heard some of our, our business owners earlier, uh, the late fees as well. And then we've been working with those interactive amusement, uh, amusement venues on the social media. We've actually created a really nice, um, uh, very short video that went out to the media and a longer video that's on our website highlighting specifically and interviewing those people that are, own those businesses. So people could understand you have businesses here that have been here in this community for 50-plus years. And these businesses are, uh, at the point where if we don't get them some revenue and get them some support from our community, they're going to close. And that would be a travesty. Um, Mr. Mata talked about, uh, helping out, you know, giving our kids something to do. Uh, if we would lose all of these things, every one of these things are things that kids, uh, really are who goes to them. And so, uh, it would be a travesty to lose all our, our, you know, interactive venues, entertainment venues. But that's what we're looking at if we don't support these businesses. Uh, some of them are getting to open now, only at 25%. If they could open at 25%, they probably would, would be happy, uh, and make money. But we're looking at, they, they need to be up to 100% really to make their money. And so it is going to impact them and they still need our support. And then, um, we, we, uh, got approval from the, uh, board, um, to come to y'all and get the PPE purchased and all those things. And so we're working with the businesses already on that. So, uh, your, your staff and, and council, uh, I'll tell you, your businesses greatly appreciate the effort that everybody's gone through and we will continue to go through, uh, to help out these businesses. And hopefully, uh, we can continue to see them open back up. Uh, and we haven't lost, um, any that I can point a finger at at this point. We had one gym last time, uh, but he's still talking about opening back up. So, uh, we can cross our fingers on that.
The business center that came in at the last meeting, is he still open? Or he was saying he might have to close the skate center?
He, he's opening back up this, this Friday.
Okay. And then, um, if I had a call from a business owner this week that is a gym going to open up on June 1st, but I, I referred him to Brandon, I believe. Um, he has like all this square footage and so he wanted to know how you figured out how many people he could have at one time. So I referred him to that. Is that appropriate?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
You can come to any of us. It's 25% that you got.
It's 25% of, I don't, but I don't know what the square foot, I don't know how they handled it, but.
Correct.
But they're all been very, very conscientious about the, the cleanliness and the safety and, and just really. just really glad to be able to get back to work.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any other questions on this emergency declaration? So, we need to approve it with some caveats here?
Yes, discuss these things here and figure out what you want to do.
All right. So, any questions or comments from the councilors? Yes, Councilor Bradshaw?
So, I just have a question on the Phase 2 of the, you know, library proposal, curbside services. Is, do we have the ability to do that? As the citizen wrote in, you know, about ordering books online and having them picked up and, you know, quarantine them for 72 hours afterwards and stuff. I don't even know if we have the technology, you know, in place to do that, that we could order books online and stuff. We do have that available if we decide to do that?
So, that's something we could institute now, the Phase 2 of the library, the curbside?
Yes, ma'am.
But the Phase 2 is book drop reopens, which means every book that they handle has to do the 72-hour quarantine and that's what they're concerned about right now. They prefer to do like San Antonio is doing and stay in Phase 1 and closed so that they're not inundated. They don't have the staff to do the quarantine. The other thing that she's concerned about is the room in the library. Where are they going to put all this stuff to quarantine? Every room has stuff in it. So, I assume what we would do is clean out that back, the Joyce Trent Room? We would clean that out and then try to separate it out back there somehow. Because that's the least cluttered room in the library. Again, I think they had, they just had a really bad experience when they were open and San Antonio was not, and they're afraid now. That both the library director and the assistant library director are asking for us to stay in Phase 1 like San Antonio is.
All right. Councilor Hody?
Thank you. Do we have any idea how much media, how many books are out right now? What would be coming in if we did open up the book drop?
I'm not sure how many books are out right now, actually. But the, I can't even remember the number of books we have in there, actually.
No, that's fine. Maybe we can look into that and at least start getting some of those books back in again. Because I too would like to see, at least be able to, you know, order a couple of books, you know, to throw into the trunk would be fantastic start. And I understand not doing it yesterday, but, you know, let's shoot for that.
Yeah, we have some books and books on tape at the door that we can't take back yet. So, I agree. We gotta, but I'm also hearing what the librarians are saying. Okay, yes, sir.
So, along that line with Councilor Hody, you know, couldn't we kind of change this a little bit and say, you can pick books up, you know, assuming those stuff in there is clean, but you can't return them until further notice, right? We're already extending the, you know, waiving fees and extended due dates and stuff. So, you know, until we know more or figure out a way to be able to clean the books and set up a better process, you know, maybe we can do Phase 1, you can order books online for pickup or something like that, you know. Like, I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but for myself, every time I have to go somewhere and order lunch, you get things different ways, like in a paper bag or something like that. So, I don't know, something like that would maybe work.
Rosie's saying she thinks she has about over 1,000 books out right now.
1,000 books out?
1,000 books are out.
Wow. Wow, okay.
You know, we could at least start quarantining those books that are out and start handling some of that so it's not all done at once.
Yes, Mr. Hody, go ahead.
Something as simple as, you know, last name begin with A, you can turn your books in. I'm not sure how that would be advertised, but, you know, I think we could do something like that. We should.
Because otherwise, that quarantining and the 72 hours is going to hit them all at once, so.
So, could we take a few items in Phase 2 and put them into Phase 1? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Hody? Or Mr. Bradshaw? I think, I think you both were kind of on the same page. I don't know. At least returning the books is what I heard you say.
Patrons can request books by placing in Holden Library's catalog and calling the library and pick up books. The contact list, I think it's a difficult point down.
Okay, so there's two things. One was to return the books so they can start getting, there's 1,000 books out to get cleaned.
Right.
But then, I'm not sure about the checking out the books if the library is ready for that or they need more time.
So, that means that all of San Antonio can check out Leon Valley's books because all the libraries are closed.
The closest open library we have to us that answered is Laverne.
Oh, they're open?
That's the closest one to us. That's the only one that opened.
You have that list.
With restrictions.
Yeah, I know it's.
You have one that's going to, Jordington's going to open June 1st.
But isn't Laverne open with restrictions?
Open with restrictions.
And so, I don't know which phase they're in or restrictions or, you know, should.
And Jordington is the only one that answered. They're going to open up on June 1st. Everybody else are not open or not answering that they're going to open because they're not there.
Planning to open.
Okay, yes, Councilor Rodriguez?
Mayor, in Phase 2, it talks about the DVDs. Crystal, Ms. Crystal, do we know if there's, according to Rosie, a bunch of DVDs or videos out? Then maybe we could even start at least getting those back?
I can, I don't know, but I'm sure she can get that number.
Okay. At least start somewhere, maybe.
I would just strongly suggest that you don't do both. That you do one or the other. Like, maybe right now during this downtime, let's try to get some of the publications back and some of the DVDs back so that we give the staff a little, you know, the quarantine process can start with the books and then they can be put on the shelf so we know they're safe when it's actually time for people to come in. That would give them a head start if you want to move that up, but doing both is scary.
Well, would it be easier to do the DVDs and movies since they don't have a whole ton of pages? You know, it's just.
I think you can maybe do both. They have, exactly, just the returns. I mean, obviously, it's your decision. I'm just, I'm very concerned for the staff and what they've had to deal with when the other libraries were closed. So, I'm really trying to advocate on their behalf to keep them safe.
Mr. Hody?
Can City of San Antonio citizens check out books from Leon Valley? Is that right?
Yes, they can, exactly.
Shows you what I know. Yeah, no, that sounds a little bit too problematic. But, you know, if we could start turning them in and getting them in, that's one thing taken care of. And then, if you could ask the librarians, the staff, what their thoughts are on, once, maybe once San Antonio starts allowing book pickup, which sounds like what we want to do, can we do it? Will we be ready for it?
Okay, so what I'm hearing you want to do is Phase 1, except you want to drag Number 2 and Number 3 from Phase 2 up to Phase 1. Is that correct?
That's what I say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Councilor Alcasar and Councilor Charles, do you have any comments?
Mayor, our apologies, they don't have these documents because we just got, oh, they do? Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
I saw what the chief sent us. I just don't understand why we don't follow the guidance of the people involved in the library. Why do we feel that we should go beyond what they're suggesting? I did read through their phases and I think the phases are a very good plan and I think they had reasons for it. Yes, there's nobody there besides chief to talk about it, but I accept what they say. I think they can give us a timeframe in the not-too-distant future. If we had miraculous infrared machines or whatever that could clean up everything instantly, I don't know. It sounds like the people talking are not familiar with the fact that the library is probably one of the most used in the whole San Antonio area during the summer months. And it is going to be very sad that the children and adults and everybody who enjoys going all the time, including me and my grandkids and my kids, it's very sad, but everything is sad right now. And we do have to pay attention to the people who work there and why we would try to change what they're suggesting rather than, say, give us a timeframe. That's the thing I'm, I think would be helpful is some kind of timeframe for each phase when they anticipate something can be done. And I do agree with the fact we may not have to wait on San Antonio for everything, but if we don't, we will have to say, sorry, you have to be a Leon Valley resident. And then, that causes its own problem. But anyway, that's my input on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Charles?
Yes, I believe that we should take the advice and the suggestions of the people in the workplace. And they know how it runs and they know what they're capable of handling. And so, we should listen to their advice and take that.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a comment from someone in the chambers on the library, I believe. But Mr. Mata, come on up. And if there's anyone else, but please let me know, just raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief.
Oh, this might help you. I just, in Teresa's email to me, it said, there's a study being conducted right now by the Institute of Museum and Library Services to identify the life expectancy of the virus on the library materials that has not been released yet. So, right now, it's a recommendation for the 72 hours. Maybe this study will show less. But I thought I had read that, so I went back to look again.
Okay, right. That would be helpful information for sure.
Exactly. So, we're guessing at this quarantine period based on what the rest of Texas is doing, but we don't have a scientific study at this point.
Okay. Mr. Mata?
Well, I didn't comment on this earlier, but I found it really interesting that we decided not to read a comment from a citizen of Leon Valley because they weren't a citizen of Leon Valley. And here, we're worried about those that don't live in Leon Valley, that aren't residents, coming to our library. So, we're being influenced to keep the library shut down for that reason. Just wanted to make that point. Also, back on the pools, the CDC has cleared pools to open because there is no proof that there's, there's no, yeah, there's no proof that COVID-19 could spread through the swimming pools, okay? But Governor has also recommended that pools could open as well. So, please, let's.
Yeah, but left it up to each municipality.
Well, I understand that and that's why I'm up here to express my feelings.
You bet, you bet. I'm glad you did. I just noticed that the Live Oak is going to open their pool on June 6th and Fredericksburg is June 15th and Alamo Heights is tentative May 30th. You know, maybe, you know, we could use that as a, what do you call it, like a pilot and see how that goes and if they don't have any problems. And that's what I like about this flexibility with the contract, you know?
Well, I appreciate the council being open-minded at the last meeting and being willing to look into it a little more and voting on it now. But, you know, I think there was a lot of input at the last council meeting and it seems on social media, there's a lot of parents that would also like to see that pool open as well.
Yeah, right. It's a balancing, yeah, it's a balancing act between the safety and the.
Well, CDC has recommended it, you know?
Okay, well, thank you. I'd like to see how those other pools do, you know, see if they have any problems. Let's think of our motion here. Yeah, let's craft our motion. Where is chief? Oh, there you go. I know, everybody's got masks on and we all look alike in a way. So, anyway, so this is Executive Order 2020? Is that what you're saying?
We're amending 2020.
We're amending 2020. Okay, so we move to approve amending Executive Order 2020. And what's it going to look like?
We're asking that we adopt Exhibit 8, which is the GA 23 from the Texas governor, NWO 7, which is the.
Judge Wolf.
Judge Wolf and Commissioners Court Executive Order. And that we open most of our City Hall and City Administration on June 1st. We have a limited opening of municipal court. And that we keep closed at this time, the library, the pools and the senior center to be discussed at the next council meeting. We'll bring it up again and y'all can discuss and see how things are going at that point for the rest of them.
Right, I just think having that flexibility is really, really important and not shut down a decision because things change.
I don't think any of us are recommending shutting it down at this time forever.
Yeah, and especially since, you know, thank you for this summary. We've got, we've got some examples in our town with Live Oak and Alamo Heights and Fredericksburg opening their pools. And we can see how they've gone, how much time and effort it takes to clean and if anybody gotten sick and, you know, blah, blah, blah. So, I think, I like that, so.
And we'll have that for you next time as well.
Okay, and so, on the library, are y'all okay with, we were talking about moving two items up to Phase 1 and I heard a disagreement with, by one of the other councilors. So, what, let's clarify that, please. Leave it as is? And what I understood is we want some possible dates of these phases if we can? Is that what I heard?
Yes, that's what I heard, is if we started returning books, we wouldn't just do it all at once. I think, I don't know if it was Councilor Bradshaw or Hody, but the idea was if your last name starts with, you know, A through C or whatever, you can drop books on this day. See, that way, they're not inundated. And there's a small staff over there and they can start doing the three-day disinfecting until the study tells them different. That's, I mean, we can't do a mass drop, but we could advertise and see what we could get back. We could try that. That's up to you all.
But again, do we keep it in Phase 2 or do we move it up to Phase 1? Yes, Mr. Hody?
I think we probably keep it in Phase 2 now, but we need to know from the staff or we need to direct the staff or tell them what it is that we're thinking should occur, but we're not going to force them to do that right now. That's just what we want to aim towards.
We can come back.
Really needs to.
Do you have a second?
Can come back at the next meeting and give you a plan on how we could do that.
Okay, sir, that's fine.
And the governor will have another order. Trust me.
We'll have two.
He will, he will. And so will Judge Wolf. Okay.
Okay, I'm.
Meeting closed, just for clarification. So, no drop-off, no nothing. We'll come back with the plan on June 2nd.
Is that the, just the general consensus is to keep Phase 1 and then Phase 2, but we'll discuss it at June 2nd meeting, hopefully with a date, a potential date for Phase 2 to go into effect, possibly?
Okay, so Phase 1 is in effect on June 2nd. We'll discuss Phase 2. Is that what I heard?
Correct, with some possible dates and ways of at least returning some of these books.
Okay.
So, if we could have a little bit more guidance on that. Yes, sir?
Also, I'd like to know from the library staff whether there's anything that, you know, I know is touchy, that volunteers could maybe assist them with, it's not too detailed. You know, do they need any kind of help at all? I'd be glad to go over there and, you know, assist them, but certainly I don't want to get in the way of anything.
Yeah, I would be very concerned about volunteers being over there right now and the city's liability.
How about council volunteers?
Oh, yeah, council volunteering.
How about just me?
Let's talk offline, figure that out.
Okay, so the library, continue with Phase 1 until June 2nd? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the pools will stay closed until June 2nd? We'll have another discussion then with data from the other pools in the area of how they're doing?
Point of order, mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
On the, I noticed on the governor's, on his order, he put that he wouldn't do anything until June 3rd. And I thought maybe we should move our meeting to maybe the 4th. So, before any action is taken, I don't know how we consider that part of the issue. But that was concerning to me since our meeting is the 2nd and they weren't going to take action till the 3rd and we don't usually know it till the 4th. So, I was suggesting maybe we. maybe we have our first meeting in June on the 4th.
Thank you for that input. Okay, so I was using the June 2nd. We've got all these moving plates. Okay, all right. So, if we had June 4th, when would our next meeting be? Would it just be a regular 2nd, Thursday?
Have the meeting on the 4th, is what she was saying.
Does anybody, is it, does anybody on the council have a conflict with June the 4th?
Not that I know of.
Staff, so just, okay, by consensus, it's a Thursday, and that does sound like it's more reasonable, because then we're going to be flipped, and we're going to be changing...
He's been doing them on Mondays. If he said the 3rd, then, I mean, it worked out long hours for me, but it worked out for us to be able, the next day to...
Yeah, he's been doing it on Mondays, yeah, definitely. Okay, well, this is a Thursday. That's out of character. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Bradshaw.
On the pools, I would like to set a tentative open date for the pools, because don't we have to find lifeguards and get stuff ready? We can't just all of a sudden say, okay, let's open this week, and then it pushes it, you know, two more weeks, or however much longer, until they could open, if we don't make a plan for it. And we could always adjust it, right? If we find out on June 4th that there's been issues, or get some data back that's adverse. But otherwise, if we don't make a plan, then we're never going to get there.
Just don't forget I'll have a contract to sign at that point.
You have a contract?
I will have to, to make sure that you have lifeguards in place, so then if you don't open, then you're going to be paying. Just remember that, that's all.
Yeah. You know, Mr. Bradshaw, I think I'd rather get the evidence from these pools on how they're doing on June, you know, by June the 4th, if they've had any problems, and how long does it take, and what do they have to do? I mean, you know, to me, that's kind of...
I don't think you're going to get any...
We're not going to get that?
Data, the incubation period's too long. You're not going to know. If somebody went to the pool and got sick, and you won't know it till later on. I mean, next thing you know, it's going to be October.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I just, that was just my initial thing, was to learn from those pools that are opening up now, so.
It'd also be interesting to learn whether or not, you know, there's an influx of person going to those couple of pools in the area that are opening. If San Antonio's not opening, are their pools getting inundated? That would be interesting to know, too. But, yeah, we're not going to have, as far as the incubation period, we're not going to have any information who got sick, who didn't. That's not going to be available.
Okay, well, yes, Mr. Hody?
So, what have you learned or heard about limiting the amount of people in the pool?
It's 25% according to the Governor's order at this time.
Okay, and do you have any idea what that would be for each of our pools?
I don't know, sir.
Off the top of your head?
I noticed the letter that came in saying, you know, allow them 50 in the pool. I don't think our pools, any of them, were 200 in the pool. I couldn't see that. That's a lot. But I'm, we'd have to look at certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, I didn't know if we did the season pass, or whether if those would be the folks that would have priority, instead of somebody just wander, I don't know.
Just a walk-up?
Right.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean, that way, we kind of have an idea of how many people.
But do we have the CDC guidelines for swimming pools?
Absolutely.
Can we, have we seen that? I know Mr. Diaz, I think he's, Raymond Diaz, didn't he send it? Yeah. So, I think I'd like to see that, what it says, because they've kind of thought it through, too. And maybe we could address that at the next meeting and say, this is a proposal, maybe, that we could look at that. I don't know.
Definitely, we can definitely look at that. I will tell you that, like a lot of these businesses, all the ones I read yesterday, they recommend additional staff have to be hired to enforce the safety, health and safety issues, to control the door, those types of things. And so, you're likely have to hire more people to run a pool than we did in the past, meaning it's going to cost us more.
So, Melinda said the 25% occupancy at Forest Oaks is 45, and at the Leon Valley Community Pool is 50.
That's interesting.
Diaz does not recommend opening at all.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
I texted Melinda.
Okay, good.
Melinda said 45 at Forest Oaks, 50 at Leon Valley Pool. Mr. Diaz does not recommend opening at all.
Oh, okay. Is that a pool committee decision? Because I didn't see it in the packet. He, the packet was as if they were going to open with meals and, you know, all that, so I didn't see that recommendation.
I think that's his recommendation as a pharmacist, because he sent the email to us.
As a pharmacist?
Yeah, like, just his personal recommendation, not from the committee.
Okay, it's not from the committee, okay.
And then Melinda said we would have to hire an attendant, and the new cost for one pool is $62,000.
And does that include the lifeguards?
And she's watching the meeting, she's responding. She said, no, just his recommendation, to answer your question, Mayor.
Okay, so $62,000 to open up one pool, no lifeguard, cost included.
She didn't say that.
She didn't say that. She just said we would have to hire an attendant, and the new cost for one pool, $62,000. And then she said, in response to the Mr. Diaz question, no, just his recommendation.
Just his recommendation, okay.
I think she's saying you'd have to hire an additional person.
Yeah, I do, plus the contract.
You'd be an attendant that has to enforce all the cleanliness and social distancing and all that stuff.
Okay, all right. And...
Lifeguards are included in the $62,000.
That lifeguards are included, okay, that's what I needed.
And Melinda will be here for your answer questions next time.
Okay, thank you. And seniors, senior citizen, I understand because of all of the, you know, I mean, that's a very vulnerable population. But I do want everybody to know, I have heard from a couple of seniors, and they want to come back. And they said they'll do anything to come back, masks, gloves, so I just want to put that on the record. So, anyway, okay. Yes, Mr. Bradshaw?
One more thing about the pools, I just wondered with our new app that we can pay for, to get in and for season passes, could we limit it and say, you know, it's on a first-come, first-served, reservation-only with the app? I don't know if it has that capability. And you say, okay, we've already got 50 for the day, so you can't, you can't come in.
Yvonne would be the one to answer that question on the app. I don't know the answer, but we have somebody that does know the answer. Okay.
Because I was just thinking, you know, like that you pointed out earlier, if we open our pools in San Antonio, then everybody blocks. But if we limit it to, here's the app, and you have to make a reservation, then it would kind of prevent some of that.
Hi, Yvonne, how are you this evening? There was a question about the new app?
Hi, Yvonne. The question is, do you know if on the app it allows us to limit the number of people that could buy a ticket for a day? You know, we say we limit it to 50 people per day, and first-come, first-served, anything like that would be...
So, certainly, the software, if it were ready, it's not. When all this happened, we were in the midst of, you know, getting it going, and COVID happened, and it shut it down. So, we're about a month behind our app.
A month away, still.
Exactly. But certainly, Melinda and I had discussed options for opening the pool, should that occur. And we talked about maybe limiting it to, you know, maybe doing a class, which we can set it up, where someone can get on, register, and do a 10-visit, you know, pool, kind of, not membership, we would get rid of that, but have kind of a class.
Right.
And so, you could sign up to do 10 visits for whatever fees you would decide.
Right.
And limit it to maybe an hour and 45 minutes, to allow for the 15, 20 minutes to disinfect in between patrons.
Gotcha. Like a time schedule, it's available, or it's capable if it was ready.
It is, it is. And it would have been, you know, ready, had COVID not happened. But so we're still moving forward, and we'll still, you know, with practicing social distancing, getting one of our, getting the receptionist trained, getting the pools ready in case that happens, with the pin pads, we already have those, just so that we're ready if that, whenever that occurs, whether, you know, sometime in the summer, you know, or whenever. But, and so that's something that we will implement, is having those classes available where, and we will do, we'll do like an advertising, where we would ask our residents to go ahead and register for their membership, or, you know, their registration, it's free. So, when, if that does happen, they're already ahead of the game. They would just go in and say, oh, I want to pay for the 10 classes, and they're ready to go. And so, but it is logistically very hard to open a pool at minimal, you know, occupancy.
Right.
And as far as, yes, we would have to hire more staff to disinfect, because you really couldn't ask a 16-year-old lifeguard to have that responsibility. And then you'd have to have someone at manning the front. If you get a disgruntled patron, why, why can't you let me in, you know? And how do you keep those people that are waiting to come in in line? Oh, no, you have to register online. So, there's a lot involved. And so, we were trying to talk about all the possibilities that would, you know...
But the bottom line is, you don't even have that app for another 30 days minimally.
Correct. The app is not, you know, it's not ready. I mean, it's, it's there.
And we need that in order to open up the pool?
Exactly, exactly. And that's where we were at. We would have been already ready to go, but COVID happened.
Okay, sure. COVID's changed our world.
Exactly, it changed everything. Our new norm is totally different.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, for that pool, it would be 30 days at least, see? So, it wouldn't be June 1st, it would be June, yeah, the 2nd. What is today, the 19th, and our 2nd, what is our 2nd meeting in June? What date is that?
Should be the 16th.
The 16th, so it may not even be ready then. Anyway, that's optimistic. Okay, thank you for that. All right. But the library, we can still discuss on the 4th. The pool, the 2nd meeting in June because of the app, and then the senior citizens will...
So, the issue with the app, just so I can just clarify a little bit?
Yes, please.
We need to know what y'all want to do, because you have to set up the platform. So, if you're going to do it as a tiered system, like you're only going to have 10, or if council wants to do it, or you allow 45, and it's, you know, from the whole day, or, so you have to set up the reservation active net for that platform. And we were setting up the platform as if we were going to open regularly. So, whichever way y'all want to open the pool, that's how you have to set up the platform in active net. Does that, that's why, that's why it's not ready to go.
Y'all need to bring us some suggestions. I don't have the knowledge, right?
So, that's why it's not ready to go, because we had to stop. We can't put the fees in, because we didn't know how much it's going to cost.
Oh, so we have to address that first.
We don't know if you're going to do a tiered system, we don't know if you're going to do big recommendations.
This is why, this is why I was saying we need to make a plan, or we won't get there. We'll get there in July and say, okay, we can open. All right, now we got to set everything up, and, right? We need to at least set a tentative lineup.
Right.
And we'll come back to you.
June 4th, so we'll just do June 4th.
We'll come back to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, and we'll just continue to talk that, because I mean, we always give an hour to the emergency declaration, minimal, if not more. So, okay. Anything else? So, move to approve that we adopt the GA 23 Governor's Order, the NWO 7 Judge Wolf's Executive Order, reopen most of City Hall as discussed June 1st, limited opening of Municipal Court, close the, keep the library closed under Phase 1. Discuss, and come back for discussion for other phases on June the 4th, and the pool, just keep it open for discussion on June the 4th, and the senior center continue to stay closed.
And the pools remain to stay closed as well, right?
Pools remained closed until June 4th, when we have another discussion, right? Is that acceptable to, all right?
And I believe this part of the motion need to be, because you can't move the regular meeting to June the 4th. You want to cancel the regular meeting and then call a special meeting on June the 4th. Do you want to wrap all that up in this motion?
That would be good, don't you all think? Okay. And then you would add to cancel the June 2nd meeting and reschedule it to June 4th as a special meeting.
You wouldn't reschedule, you would call a special meeting on June the 4th.
Okay, but do we still cancel the June 4th, 2nd meeting?
You would cancel the June 2nd regularly scheduled meeting, and then...
Okay, and set a special meeting for...
There you go, exactly.
Okay, there you go. Okay, so cancel June 2nd and call a special.
I so move all of that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. So, we have a motion by Counselor Alcasera, and a second by Counselor Hody, to approve the, amending the Executive Order 2020 to adopt GA 23, the Governor Abbott's Order, adopt NWO 7 Judge Wolf's Executive Order, reopen most of City Hall June 1st, limited opening of Municipal Court. The library is still under Phase 1 closed, but we'll discuss other phases on June 4th. The pools remain closed, and we'll discuss other options on June 4th, and the senior citizen center will remain closed until further notice. We will also move to cancel the June 2nd regular meeting and call a special City Council meeting on June 4th. Is that all encompassing? Okay. Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mayor, so I just did have another question about the businesses that are reopening. So, I think the chief said that Skate Land's going to reopen on Friday, the Skate Land, gyms, bowling alley.
Gyms opened today, or yesterday.
Yesterday, and the aquarium?
Aquarium will open on Friday.
Friday. Okay. I got an email from the owner of the aquarium stating that you requested a written plan for their opening.
Correct.
What was the purpose of that?
The purpose of that is, he, what he wrote that they were not going to keep open, or that they were going to close, was not in compliance with the order of the Governor. And so, what I wanted to sit down with him, just like all the other businesses have done with us, and we get an understanding before they open up of what they can and can't do. That one business, as you know and you've seen, will push the envelope and play, we have to, we have to catch them doing what's wrong, which is ridiculous. And so, we wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that this can be open, but this can't. And it's not a unreasonable thing to ask under the health and safety, and we have a right to do that. And so, we definitely wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page so that there's no issues once they opened up. That's what we hope to do. If we can't get that agreement ahead of time, we'll show up Friday morning, and we'll go walk through the fire chief, and the health inspector, and everybody else will walk through, and look at what they've put in place. Because everything there is interactive, and anything that's interactive is supposed to be shut down. So, basically, there's no touch, and the whole place is an interactive facility. And so, we just want to make sure for the health and safety of our residents, and the safety of his employees, that we're all on the same page of what can and cannot be done.
Okay, did you ask other businesses for a written plan? What other businesses provided a written plan?
We're waiting on the written plans to come in. But we don't have the problems with other businesses.
What other businesses did you ask for a written plan?
You just heard me talk about the Little League that was doing that. We had the same conversation with the skating rink, and the bowling alley has very specific things that they told them in the Governor's Order.
Wow, they touch those balls.
And there's very specific things in the Governor's Order about the bowling alleys, but there isn't specific things about the skating rinks and the aquarium, except...
I just, I'm a little bit concerned by the email that they forwarded to me, that the verbiage in the email, a line says, "If you don't provide me with a written plan, so be it, but our team will see you on Thursday or Friday, your call."
Correct.
It sounds, it sounds like a threat to me.
No, it's a promise.
Yeah, it just does not sound, you know, we talk about being business-friendly and helpful to the community.
Mr. Bradshaw, I think you're ignoring all the other great things we're doing, and you're ignoring the problems. Can I finish?
Chief, please, I was speaking.
Yeah, let's not interrupt each other. Let's finish, and then Chief, you can say...
And I'm curious as well about how you decided which businesses get signs and which ones don't. Because as I drive around the city, I see a lot of businesses that have signs, yes, we're open, and there's quite a few that are open that don't have signs. And if you go and talk to those business owners... Excuse me, excuse me, I'm still talking. If you, if you go and talk to those...
Point of order, you're...
You didn't raise your hand, and you're not on camera as requested by the mayor.
Well, wait a minute, Mr. Bradshaw, hang on just a second, just a second. Mr. Zek, the point of order has been called, and it's...
What's the point of order?
This is, the point of order is, yes, tell me what your point of order is specifically. Is it Ms. Charles or Ms. Alcasera? You have to tell me why.
The point of order is he's gone off topic. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and he's going, talking about signs, and like discriminating on signs, and all these other things that aren't part of our, of this particular motion.
And there, that is, that has a valid...
Mayor, the signs were in the presentation.
I know. I wish we had... I know, I wish we had, okay.
The signs were part of the presentation that the chief gave. So I was talking about the signs and I'm talking about how do they determine which businesses have got signs and which ones didn't? Because as I've gone around town and talked to some businesses, some of them say they've never been offered signs.
Okay.
You know, it's point of order, but this is not part of the topic.
We're going to move on with the motion and the order, motion and the second right now because it is, I, I wish we had brought that up when we had the sign and other discussion, but we're, we, I, I believe we need to, to limit it to our, our points right here. So, yes.
I, I'm okay with moving on, but I just had a statement or a question. Every time chief gets up to talk, why does it always have to be a, I'm going to have the last word type of debate? You know, chief is trying to present. I understand Mr. Bradshaw's point about, you know, about, no, about the, about the aquarium and I get it, but why can't we ever just be respectful enough to listen one to the other? It's always a debate. Or, or I know more than you or no, wait, I'm talking and I get the, the respect factor.
Okay.
But jeez, it's always, it always has to be a hassle.
All right, thank you for those comments, but that's also not within our order either, our, our motion and our second. So let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion does carry. And Mr. Bradshaw, what I would do is I'd encourage you to meet with chief and get those questions answered on the signs and on the businesses because, you know, you do have legitimate concerns. These people have contacted you and so that's what, that's what I would say.
I prefer to put it on an agenda, future agenda.
Okay, we'll put it on...
And we have asked, ma'am, and we have asked and will continue to ask is...
That's good, yeah. We just need to move on, but yeah, but I think we need to answer those questions either in, one-on-one or on an agenda would be fine. But we have spent an hour and twenty minutes on this, which is very, very important. Okay, we're moving on to agenda item seven point two. Ms. Posely, if you'll please read that agenda item.
An emergency ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas City Council amending the general fund budget of the City of Leon Valley, Texas municipal budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in the amount of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to provide funding for the Leon Valley, sorry, Leon Valley General Fund for the purchase of additional bunker gear, providing, providing for peeler, severability and savings clauses and providing for an effective date. Sorry, my glasses keep hugging up.
Chief, good evening, welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council.
If you'll begin.
I hope y'all can hear me. I bring you this item today and this is a request to purchase an additional set of bunker gear for each one of our firefighters. Over the last six months, the Texas Commission on Fire Protection has sent out some new rules for us that tell us what we can and can't do with our bunker gear. I know y'all have addressed or heard some of these things from your previous chiefs as they've made changes. You know, some of the new things that we have to do, if we use our bunker gear, we have to take it off, put it in bags, clean it, wash it, dry it, and inspect it before we can use it again. And that process can ta, it takes forty-eight hours just to dry. And in that time, we're not allowed to wear that gear again. I included the, the rules and the law numbers in your packet. I know that that thing is long, that just came out and we have to write SOPs to prove to the fire commission how we're doing this. We're not even allowed to put our bunker gear in the cab of the truck once it's used. It has to be bagged and go in an outside compartment. The other issue that we're having is having to decon this stuff. I, I know that it may not be specifically on topic, but we have a lot of COVID. We have a lot of COVID.
In Leon Valley?
Absolutely. I know you get the same report I get. The numbers aren't even close.
I know, there's always a discrepancy when I talk to you.
They're not close.
I don't know why.
I, I said earlier, they're on a, they're cleaning from a COVID call right now. This request would allow us to put an extra set of gear into each locker so as this stuff is bagged, being cleaned, decontaminated, dried and inspected, the guys will have bunker gear to wear. The fire departments that surround us, which is District Two, District Seven, Halotas, Chavino Park, Castle Hills, Alamo Heights, Terre Haute, Almost Park, and then when you get to the east side, Converse, Kirby, Shirts, Selma, Live Oak, all those already do this. The fire commission will not come out and specifically say you have to have two, but once you use it, you can't use it again. And if you'll remember, one of the letters y'all read already tonight was about the fire on Blacksmith. And that fire was early in the day. Well, it wasn't early, it was at three o'clock in the afternoon. So that gear could not be used again for seventy-two hours? That, that makes it tough for us to go to another fire. And the gear we have to wear has to be made for you. It has to fit right. We can't buy generic gear that fits me and Captain Garcia. It's not, it's not the same. And that's what we're requesting. It's that simple and easy.
Right. So when those people leave, do they take their bunker gear with them? Or what do you do with their bunker gear if it's specific for them?
If it's specific for them, which some of ours is, we use it. We use it for training gear.
Oh, you just use it?
We use it for other things, they're not allowed to have it because it's a cancer risk. Cancer is the big thing that's in this packet, but COVID affects it too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of initiatives out. I mean, if we go to a fire, not only does all that stuff have to be bagged up, we have special wipes that we have to wipe everything down with, all of our equipment has to be decontaminated and the guys have to come back, shower immediately, get out of all the clothes that they had, put in new clothes and then put on protective PPE to even begin to start cleaning this, our air packs and anything else simply because of the cancer risk.
All right. Chief, did you say how, and I don't, didn't see it in here, but it might be in here, how many bunker gear?
Twenty-seven sets.
Twenty-seven sets.
We have twenty-seven firefighters that are certified in...
Okay. So is it just one, but we're adding to the twenty-seven that we already have?
We already have twenty-seven.
Exactly. Okay, I just want, so it would be two per...
It would be two and then...
Per, and is that the standard or do other...
Everybody.
Okay, so we just haven't been up to the standard?
We have, this COVID and the amount of fires that we've been getting has dictated that this come up right.
So they wear the bunker gear rather than the PPE that they have at the hospitals?
Right.
In other words, it's a, but you're still protecting yourself, but with different equipment?
Right. But that stuff gets exposed, it wrecks. The guys, the guys on the engines in the trucks have that stuff on when they go on calls. And if they end up going into a COVID call, it has to be cleaned.
Okay.
So it's COVID that has dictated the additional purchase?
Cancer is what's dictating it. COVID is tagged right onto it.
Okay.
Because we have to clean from it.
I'm asking for reimbursement purposes for later on.
Okay, so you, this, this is something we can get back from possibly. Right, you just have to document everything. I under, that's what I'm hearing from these meetings. Yeah, you just have to document, document, document because that's the only way you're going to get reimbursed.
But the Texas Commission on Fire Protection tells us that we can't use that gear again until it's cleaned and disinfected and dried. And the other thing, you can't wear wet gear. If you have wet gear and you go into a fire, it'll steam burn you from the inside.
Oh, wow, okay.
But the majority of the stuff that's in your packet is cancer driven.
Cancer driven.
You're going to, you're going to see it a lot more than it already is, but COVID's, COVID's right on top of it too.
Okay.
But this is the only way to keep the firefighter safe. Nobody in the state of Texas, I was on a conference call about this this week, there's nobody that has a solution other than this, is to buy...
Just buying an extra set.
An extra set of gear that they can bag one set up and put on another set and be ready to respond again.
Okay. And this is coming from the general fund? Okay, just wanted to note that. Okay, any questions? I mean, to me, it's like, what, what's the question? I mean, we need it, you know? So, but are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Rodriguez.
I was just ready to make a motion.
Okay, let me see if there's any other questions and, well, go ahead and make the motion and then we can have discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept seven point two as presented.
Okay.
A second.
All right.
I have a question, nobody could hear me.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead. We just went, we had a motion by Counselor Rodriguez and a second by Counselor Bradshaw to approve seven point two as presented and now it's discussion. Ms. Charles. Counselor Charles.
I was going to ask that it's, as busy as you have been, chief, it, it, it's almost as if maybe two sets are not enough.
Yes, ma'am, but two sets is the standard. I mean, we, we can't as a, as a department, we can anticipate things in the future, but we can't staff and equip ourselves for what happens once every five years where the question on the ambulance, where every ambulance is gone and every truck is gone. I mean, we, we just can't. This is the norm. It, it's not more than what we need and it's not less than what we need.
And we're bringing it up to the standard that we need to be, yeah.
And I don't know of any, in listening to that statewide conference call with all the fire chiefs, I didn't hear anybody say they had three sets.
Okay.
And we have the decon equipment, we have an extractor that washes it and we have these drying boxes with fans in them that that gear can go in and it will dry gear faster. But if you have eight guys on duty, tho, that washer extractor washes two sets of gear at a time, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
And so once you get it all washed, it's got to hang, it can't be in sunlight, it can't be dried with heat. I know it sounds crazy, but...
But where do you hang it?
Hang it inside the bays and put fans on it, but the, the liner, the inside of the coat's this thick. It's got three layers to keep you from getting burned and to get, keep moisture off of you. It takes a long time to dry. And then that gear is inspected every, it, it has to be inspected by a third party every year to make sure that all that stuff's intact as well.
All right. Any other questions before we move on?
Mayor, I have a comment. Monica Alcasera?
Yes, yes, Ms., Counselor Alcasera, go ahead.
This particular item was featured on the national news partly in relation to nine eleven and then with updates, but, and it was also featured on Chicago Fire because one of the firefighters there died from the cancer from, because this hadn't occurred. So I, I'm very glad you're doing it, chief. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And this is a great way to keep our firefighters safe.
Thank you for protecting them.
You bet, that's, that's our job. Okay, moving then to the regular agenda, item number eight point one. Ms. Posely, if you'll please read that ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas City Council granting a specific use permit for entertainment indoor use at seventy forty Bandera Road, more specifically the tenant suite labeled as seventy twenty-two Bandera Road, providing for repealer, severability and savings clauses and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Malone, good evening and welcome.
Mayor, if I could, I told Mr. Malone I would do this at the beginning of the agenda and I forgot, we need to remove item eight point two. They're going to move it to the June fourth now agenda because it's not a June second agenda anymore, okay?
Thank you.
My apologies for not doing that early on.
Actually, thank you for announcing that, that we'll have to move it, but we'll actually have to postpone it until a later meeting because the state law requires that you publish in a newspaper.
Oh, you publish for the second?
Fifteen days in advance, so I published for June the second, so I'll, I'll be sure. And I apologize for being on there tonight. It was, we had planned for it to go, we've kind of been pushing it along and so that it saw the date for the nineteenth tonight. So I'll get with Mr. Rubio tomorrow, let him know that we've changed.
So it's, it's going to be... Brandon, if you post tomorrow, I think that's enough time because it's fifteen days.
I have to get it to the newspaper. So I can call the Halotas Echo in the morning and maybe you see...
Yeah, and see if we can get it done tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe, maybe there's a way they can...
Because I just don't want him to be delayed again.
I'll call him first thing in the morning and see. We'll keep our fingers crossed that James can get it in there for you.
But you're saying if it's not June fourth, it would be the June sixteenth meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Unless, unless I can, you know, today's the nineteenth, unless, yeah, I don't know, I'll have to look at the, because you said it would be fifteen days if, if he published it tomorrow.
You do it tomorrow.
So we, we might still be able to keep it before.
Weekends and holidays count? Weekends and holidays count on that fifteen days?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right.
I'll get on that first thing, hopefully we can...
Wonderful. Okay, so if you'll continue, thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. This is a request this evening for a specific use permit for the Otaku Cafe. They're the applicants, the owners are here this evening, the gentleman in the blue shirts there, Richard and Rick, and they're here to answer any questions that you might have. They, they, they are the owners of the Otaku Cafe. The Taco Cafe is a unique type of establishment. It's a, it's a combination of Ja, they sell Japanese anime, there's a Japanese anime retail shop, they're also an arcade as well, and they're also a facility that has gaming tournaments for, you know, all ages, and I'll let them talk a little bit more about what their tournaments are like, but they have tournaments. So they're kind of like a threefold type of business. They already have one establishment in Castle Hills, south of four-ten, and they're wanting to open up a new establishment here in Leon Valley over in the Bandera Heights Shopping Center in, in the suite labeled as seventy twenty-two, which is right next to the, the tax, the Jackson Hewitt, I think is the, the tat shop that's over there, so that's the suite.
That's in Hobby Lobby.
Yes, ma'am, it's just kind of, kind of south of Hobby Lobby, more behind the Water Burger. So there's a suite over there, it's about five thousand, three hundred and forty square feet, and the, the exhibit is located in your packet. And so I kind of went into some of this already, there you go. That's the exact location where they are, right there. It's a fifty-three, or five thousand, three hundred and forty square foot space. There you go, there's a site photo. Current zoning is, is B two and they're also in the sustainability overlay. So as we know from previous S U Ps, this type of use in arcade is considered entertainment indoor and the tournament as well, that's all considered entertainment indoor, so they have to have an S U P for that. So they went to the Planning and Zoning Commission back in March, so they've been waiting to bring this request to y'all because unfortunately they're not able to be in business right now, but they're anticipating some of the restrictions letting up and they're wanting to get ready and, and have their S U P in place for whenever they open up. So, so this went to the, the planning, I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead. I do have a question I wanted you to finish.
So this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission back in March. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously to approve the request. As always, you know, some of the things that we talked about, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we looked at impact, intensity of use, operations, parking. Staff does not have any concerns, it's, y'all drive past there, there's tons of parking out there. It's a huge shopping center that's built for all types of uses, you know, they'll have a few peaks with their tournaments, but staff doesn't see any concerns with this request. And so the only thing with, as with every single S U P, you always need to make sure And so, the only thing with, as with every single S U P, you always need to make sure it's tied to a site plan. It's limited, so, you know, if they wanted to grow, they'd come back to the commission and the city council and ask for, to amend their request to expand. We wish them the best with their success. And so, staff recommends, and as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, subject to the, the S U P being limited to the square footage in the exhibit, and that a peace officer be provided if there is ever any types of events in which alcohol might be sold. We always kind of put that in there as a placeholder. So, other than that, happy to answer any questions? Like you said, the applicants are here, and they're.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I guess what I was, I was thinking as you were presenting was, this is very unique. I mean, you've got a cafe, right, and, and an arcade? And, I mean, it's like a multi-use, and so, according to the governor and the local, they're not able to open then, right now? Or could they open up the cafe at 25% or 50%? But they couldn't do the gaming yet, or the arcade? And that's okay? I mean, y'all are willing to, to, to take whatever you can take in order to get up? If you're coming up and just introduce yourselves, and welcome to Leon Valley, we're glad that you chose us to start your business, or expand your business, because you said you're in Castle Hills, is that correct? Okay, yeah, let's, let's wait until, yeah, because we are recording. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Really appreciate it. Safety is the utmost importance here. Okay, if you'll introduce yourself, please.
I'm Richard Hito.
Richard?
And I'm Roberto Palindo.
Okay.
Excuse me, my, I have a bunch of filters in it.
Okay.
We're actually, here.
Yes.
We're actually leaving Castle Hills.
Oh, you are?
The space that we have was around 3,500 square feet, and we've actually, are busting at the seams.
Okay.
And so, that's why we're choosing this location that's much bigger. What I was going to add is, we're not an actual cafe that serves food.
Oh.
We call ourselves the Otaku Cafe, and it sounds kind of corny, but we feed your inner nerd. So, we sell prepackaged. Prepackaged Japanese snacks, but nothing that, we don't have a kitchen.
Oh, okay.
We don't make the food. The food comes already prepackaged from Japan, we opened up.
From Japan.
Coffees, teas, sweet drinks.
Is that issue?
Stuff you find at like Tim's, but more, it's ready to go, and right now, it's already cold. For instance, Paki, which is like I got cookie with chocolate, I'm about to stick. There we go. Sweet bun, stuff like that, everything. And it has, was it called the guidelines? We buy our stuff from California, Houston, places like that.
And you have a current website?
We do, actually, yes.
So, we could look at it and see what kind of?
Yeah, right now, the website we have is an e-commerce website. It's rroTakuCafe.com.
Okay.
And we have Facebook, we have Twitter, and we also have Instagram.
Okay.
You'll see the majority of our stuff is talking about curbside pickup, as well as delivery. Because everything that's going on, we were already planning on moving, so we closed up shop and went strictly to e-commerce, and the curbside's actually gone now, and we're doing straight delivery to residents in San Antonio, Leon Valley, stuff like that.
Okay.
Just due to the nature of the way our place is, it's more of a hangout, so both of us felt it was completely unsafe to allow people in. So, we started doing only curbside as quickly as they would allow it, and then we went to delivery only, this week actually, because we are really a hangout. People like us, because they come, they join, and they're together. That's not safe right now, and we're not going to.
Right, so what's your limitation going to be, the number, based on your square foot?
We wouldn't open up until it was completely safe. Like 25%, no way. 50% maybe, maybe 50% occupancy.
But would they qualify for 50% Chief? As a, if you say you're not a cafe?
We're a retail.
Yeah.
You're rea- retail?
Retail's the pole.
Okay, retail's still at 25, right?
He's not allowed to open at all, because he's an arcade. Correct.
Okay.
And we wouldn't want to. Delivery right now, from what we're doing, is completely fine.
Okay, all right.
And the layout for, just so everyone knows, for the actual retail part, is there's a door that goes into the arcade. So, you can't even get to it if you go through that door, and the door can be locked. But yes, we, we're not even ready to open. We've got probably two more months ahead of us before we actually can pull the trigger to open, and we would go by the guidelines that are set by Governor Abbott.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from either, well, let me ask, from our residents and visitors in the chambers? Do you have any questions on this? Well, you know what, we're going to have a public hearing in just a second, so let me hear from the council and see if they have any questions for the owners of this new business that wants to come into Leon Valley, and then we'll open up to the public for a public hearing as required by the S U P.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Alcoser?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Very interested in seeing them in operation, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Japanese food, wow, okay. Counselor Bradshaw?
I was going to say, it sounds like a very interesting concept.
Yeah, it does.
So, I think all of us are curious to see this cafe, and see how, how it is, and I just wanted to say, welcome to Leon Valley.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, part of our job tonight is to hear from the public, so we have quite a number of people in the chambers this evening, so let me open up the public hearing at 9:05. And does anyone have a comment that they would like to express on this potential business that's coming, that wants to come to Leon Valley? The S U P sounds reasonable. So, that's, no news is good news, right? Yes, oh, the chief wants to weigh in. Okay, Chief, go right ahead. Oh, okay, he's going to talk a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, whoa.
So, we've, we've met, we've had some great conversations, and we are excited about them coming in as well. I do want it on the record, conversation that we've had about when they're having their competitions, them taking money at the door, because there's some legal reasons behind that. So, we've agreed that they won't do that on those days, and that the, they won't be the, the people handling all the money when the, when the people are competing and all that stuff. And so, other than that, that's the only comment I have, and so, you know, because the, the police, and when it comes to the arcades and stuff like that, we're supposed to look into them and do those things according to ordinance. So, we have met, they've satisfied our concerns that we had, and we're, we're excited to see them come in. But I wanted that on the record, that this was our agreement ahead of time.
Okay.
The tournaments themselves, currently at Castle Hills, if you want to join a tournament, we charge $5. But here in Leon Valley, if you want to join a tournament, the tournament will be free for you to join, so there will be basically no venue for tournaments. The cost would be actually, if you want to play some of the arcades, the $5, two hours, or $8 for all day. Then that was what the agreement was about.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions, comments on the public hearing? If not, then I will close the public hearing at 9:07. And this is our first read, so according to our rules, we're a home rule charter city, we need to have two reads. So, the next city council meeting, which is June 4th, we will place this item on for the second read and for final approval. Okay? Well, thank you so much, we're so glad you're here this evening. And have a good evening, stay safe and stay healthy. All righty. Then moving on to agenda item number 8.3. Ms. Posle, if you'll please read that ordinance. Yes, go ahead.
An ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas City Council, authorizing amendment, an amendment of the general fund budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020, in the amount of $3,076 to provide proper funding, providing for repealer, severability, and savings clauses, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Yvonne, and welcome. We're so glad you're here.
So, yes, today, we're going to consider approval of a budget adjustment, authorizing, authorizing budget adjustment in the amount of $3,076 from the general fund to fund purchases of supplies for future Earthwise Living Day events. So, every year, you know, we have an event, and we collected $3,910 from booth rental fees and from sponsorships. We had some expenses, they were $3,534.80, which we used to purchase some tarps and other events, supplies for the event. And so, the committee is requesting a budget adjustment, so that we can purchase supplies for next year. $2,700 is placed each year in our budget from the city, and as you can see, we, what budgeted was $2,700. We had expenses of quite a bit, because we had some tarps that we purchased, which really worked out really well. They were clear of $3,534, so it left us a little negative fund balance. But we, we brought in sponsorships and booth fees of $3,650, with the 260 from vendors, and then adding in that negative fund balance, we're left with the $3,076. And so, these are some proposed purchases, the insulated tote bags and metal straws were a real hit. The tote bags are always a hit, but last year, this year was the first year we did the metal straws, and everyone just loved them. And so, you know, and then some kind of reusable, they're like tote bags, but they're not insulated, and they're actually washable, they're made of paper. So, that's something that I think would, would go really well. And so, that would, you know, take up that $3,076 for those purchases. You know, recommend that staff authorize that budget adjustment in the three, in the amount of $3,076 from the general fund for the purchase of supplies for future Earthwise Living Day events.
Very good, thank you so much. You know what, we were so lucky and so blessed to be at the last event before COVID.
Yes.
When you think about it, I mean, it was such a great day, and thanks to you and all of the committee members and all the people who participated.
Yes.
And, but as you can see, we work hard on the sponsorship and try to, you know, bring in as much money as we can, so that we can turn around, and these, this is all free giveaway.
Right.
We don't charge anybody on, on this, so.
And we had a great turnout this year.
We did, we really did, we really did, so thank you. And I'm so glad, when you called me, I said, oh, good, I'm glad we're, we're doing this so we can get ahead of the
Yes.
of the, of the game, yes.
Mayor, I have a question. How come they only get $2,700?
That's in the budget.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, because, not that I have a problem with them spending a little bit more, but do you think that maybe if they were budgeted a little bit more, you know, that might be a little bit helpful to them?
You know, I think we have a healthy, I think we have a healthy budget, I really do. As you can see, we have $3,000 left, and I think if we needed more, we could always come back.
Sure.
But I think this is reasonable. It's $2,700 from the city, but then we also get the sponsorship, and that's, and we've, we've got Tiger, they're a tremendous sponsor, plus everyone else along the way, so. But thank you for that, I mean, it's not, I don't want to turn down money, but
No, no, I was going to say, that's always appreciated.
It's always appreciated, but I think that if we, you know, we could certainly discuss it at one of the meetings and see.
I mean, I just figured if we're giving them $2,700, you know, maybe a couple hundred more to actually just make it an even.
Well, we did have it at three at one time, and then we reduced it to $2,700.
Correct.
Yeah, it used to be at three, so that was, you're perceptive on that.
Mayor, I have a question.
I'm sorry? It, I'm sorry, which, is that Counselor Alcoser?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Question. Is it, it's Yvonne speaking, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, presenting, all right. The, is, is this based on what just happened? Or is it, and so, we're reimbursing, or is this for next year?
So, there's a, an amount left over that we have to request a budget adjustment for, so that we can spend it, because it, it's not in a, you know, fund that we can spend unless we do a budget adjustment to move it over. From.
Okay.
Right.
And then?
So, it's things not already bought, correct?
We have not purchased anything, right.
In, in relation to what's going on, people seem to be finding their sewing machines again, and I was wondering if it might help a local person or two, instead of getting the Chinese bags we seem to always be getting? Can someone local be found? I constantly hear and see people who are looking for a little extra money, and I think they might be willing to do this, and I was wondering if we could look into that instead of pre-purchasing them from some unknown people that are getting them for us?
Certainly, that's certainly something that the committee could discuss, in, in trying to find someone that's local that would, could make some reusable bags, I'm sure that's not a problem.
And we have enough lead time?
Exactly.
Because we don't, we have to put the order in and have it completely paid for by, what, September 1st? Because it has to go through by the end of September, so that's why I was appreciative of Yvonne bringing this up, so that, because a lot of times, it'll be August 1st, and we'll be like, oh, we've got extra money, but we have to jump through a bunch of hoops, so we're actually ahead of the curve this, this year, aren't we?
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you. But that's a great suggestion, Counselor Alcoser, and, and I don't know, Yvonne, that's your challenge.
Exactly, to find someone local, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Bradshaw?
I just have to say that I have to agree that those metal straws are awesome.
Yes.
They even come with a little cleaner.
Yep.
So, that's really cool.
And a, and a little bag.
Yeah, a little bag, a little holder too, so you don't lose it, but.
They were very, very popular.
Yeah, they were really cool. And I'd like to move that we pass.
Oh, you know what, this is the first read.
Oh, it's this first read?
Yeah, it's the first read, so we'll come back at the next council meeting, June 4th, and we'll approve it then. But thank you. Any other questions from anyone in the chambers or from the council? Okay, if not, then we'll move on.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 8.4. Discussion and possible action on closing the community center, senior citizen, senior center for health and renovation purposes, beginning August 2020 through November 2020. And is Ms. Kinsler here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this, the purpose of this item is, I would like to talk to the city council about the consideration of closing down the community center, which we all know is a senior center, not only for health reasons, but also, we need to get that remodel done, so we feel like now is the time to go ahead and just shut it down and get the whole remodel done. We believe, and there's a timeline in here that I'll show you, but we believe that we can start the remodel August of 2020, and we can finish it by November of 2020. And looking at the special events calendar, many of the events have already been canceled by people, so there's not very many pending events. Next slide. So, in 2019, this body approved almost, almost 180,000 from the general fund economic development project funding, which had been vetted by the E D C D group to renovate the community center. Originally, this project was scheduled for next year, due to the center being booked for events during this current fiscal year. So, the approximate timeline, if we were to go ahead and do this, is up top, you see, construction takes about 90 to 120 days. June 16th, the plans and bids and documents could be ready for advertisement. We've already got the first phase from the engineer back. June 21st and 28th would be our bid advertisement. July 14th, we could open the bids. July 21st, you could approve an award contract. And then July 21st to the 31st, we would go through getting the contracts signed, hold our pre-construction meetings, and try to start construction by August the 1st. The Northwest Seniors Club considerations, once you all decide that you're ready to open the senior center, we can relocate the seniors to the conference center for the four or five months, if you lift the restrictions that quick. Public Works will install a handicapped accessible button on the back door and move the ice machine over to the conference center. Their daily activities consist of about 1,000 square foot of space usage. They play pinnacle dominoes and exercise, and, and I've also heard from a couple of seniors, they don't want to risk their, their health and safety, but they sure do want to get back to playing cards. So, I've, I've received the same message as Mayor. The kitchen is typically used for the seniors for coffee and refreshments. Once a month, they do have a luncheon. This can easily be accommodated at the senior, I mean, I'm sorry, at the conference center. You know how the, that back room we use that we cater, we do potluck or whatever with, they could do that as well. Bingo Wednesday is their busy time, and it usually has about 30 to 40 players. So, the conference center, once restrictions are lifted, could accommodate that. So, by moving the seniors to the conference center, we would reduce the amount of energy used, because we use a lot of energy in that community center for a very few amount of people. And then the center can be partitioned into smaller rooms, that conference center for the, so, for the days when they're using the senior center for a four or five-person card game, we could even put the partitions up at the conference center and make it just a little bit smaller. The fiscal impact on the budget, throughout the months of March 15th through the 30th, we've had a total of 26 bookings. Four have been postponed, 10 have been canceled, which has been a revenue loss of about $2,300, and most of them had just given their deposits, and 12 are undecided as to what they're going to do. Revenues this fiscal year have already been impacted. By doing the renovations now, that revenue potential could really increase for next fiscal year if we just sucked it up and got it done now. If not double, due to the spring influx of events, I think we're going to attract more rentals, because we will actually have a center that's competitive with other event centers in the area. Right now, it's pretty dingy, and we're not so competitive when we show it. In addition, the money that's already been budgeted for this fiscal year. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read that right. So, the money's already been budgeted for this fiscal year. If we wait, we would need to do a budget adjustment for next fiscal year. Go to the next slide. So, the fiscal impact, in between the months of August through November 2020, we still have eight events that are unknown at the community center. Some of these might be able to be moved to the conference center to accommodate them if they decide to con- Some of these might be able to be moved to the conference center to accommodate them if they decide to continue to hold their event. Other centers in Texas that are looking at mid-June opening dates, but we have very few that are trying to open before that. We have Clean, Cleburne, Richardson, New Braunfels, and Cedar Hill are looking at possibly opening their senior centers mid-June. However, the governor right now says no. So, it may, you know, we'll just have to kind of see what he says. There's no way at this time to know whether or not renters have decided to continue their events. As we get closer, we'll call them and ask them, because right now, the answer is, we don't know. It's unknown. Next slide. Due to the COVID-19 virus, the projected revenue amount for this year, because all of our bookings are all gone, is only $11,345. And for last year, your revenues were $52,000.
Wow.
Yeah, that's pretty sad. So, what's next? What we're hoping is that if we do it this way, the facility will be ready for December in time for the Christmas tree lighting. We can show it off, be ready for the spring advertisement campaigns. It would have the new amenities and new audiovisual equipment, the new kitchen, updated restrooms. The ADA accessibility issues would be fixed. And it would be even neat to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony to showcase this, you know, the newly remodeled community center and open house. And then possibly what Mary Bell Mendoza's idea was, once it actually is open, possibly, you know, for a certain amount of period, offering some types of specials or discounts for people to hold their events here so we can start getting the word out about this center again. So, for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, we continue to help flatten the curve by not allowing people to come into close contact, spreading the virus. Since the center's not currently being used due to the pandemic, staff recommends to use a downtime to finish the engineering plans, which they actually almost are finished, and proceed with the renovations five months ahead of schedule. It's consistent with one of our strategic goals, which is to continue to work on capital and planning projects. And the C statement pretty much speaks for itself. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are we doing some of this work, or how is the work being conducted? In-house, contracted out?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Council, the work would be contracted out.
All contracted out. The Public Works will not do any of this renovation. Like, okay. All right. Because I've been here such a long time, Mr. Hody, you probably know that. I mean, they practically built the Senior Citizen complex themselves.
Right.
But I know Melinda said, all those people are gone.
Right.
So, we don't have that capability, but...
Right. This would be contracted out. And I'm sure, you know, for anything little...
And we're going to go out for bids and get the lowest bid. And we might be able to save some money. Who knows?
That's right. And once we get the bid and we get the scope of work, maybe we can, you know, dissect some of that a little bit. But right now, the plan is to be contracted out.
Okay. Very good. I, thank you. Counselor Bradshaw?
Yeah, so I think two questions. One, could it be pulled up any sooner? I mean, I guess ours is...
I asked the same question.
If we could get it any earlier possible, you know, as long as they're closed, right, as long as they're closed.
Mayor, Mayor Council, Bradshaw, I will pass this on to Melinda. The engineer was told not to have his, his initial plans ready until the fall. So, I'm actually the one that caught this and said, wait, wait, now is the time to do it. And so, I called the engineer. They got right on it. And so, if we can get the plans and bid documents done prior to June 16th, in fact, I will, I will see what we can do to make that happen, because I completely agree with you. The quicker we get that done, quicker we can get that thing back open.
And the second thing is, how are the seniors reacting to this? Are they in favor of the remodel? Or, I mean, I know they're anxious to get back to stuff. So, the news that it'll be closed through November, is that...
Um, Mayor, Council, Bradshaw, I know the seniors are in favor of the remodel. They've been requesting the remodel. But I also know some of them are ready to get back. It has not been disclosed to the seniors yet. I don't have anything from you, but we've not told them that, they don't even know when they're going to be able to open back up.
Right.
But I've not said, when you do open back up, what about going to the conference center? I can't seem to think they would be too upset about it, knowing they're getting brand-new, you know, really updated community center.
It'll be better when they get back.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
And the seniors have switched over to the conference center throughout the past years because of conflicts or something, you know.
And they've also switched over to the library conference room typically.
So, they're really cooperative about that. All right.
Mayor, if I may...
Yes, Counselor Alcacer. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's one of the few, in quotes, blessings from this, that this can be handled like this. I don't, I think they were, they were anticipating some negative things of having things interrupted next spring. So, it's really good that it can happen while they aren't able to use it in the interim, and we have a good alternative when it can open. So, I think it's great. Thank you. And thanks for thinking about that, Steph.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Hody.
Here's a quick question. What happens, I don't know if there's anything in there worth salvaging, but is that something we put in our auction, or, you know, is there ovens, stoves, refrigerator units? Because I'm assuming we're going to replace some of that? All of it? None of it?
Yes, we are going to replace some of that, and we could certainly put it up in our auctions. I guess we could do that. Or it could go to the junk pile. Some of it don't work to the recycle bins. So, that'll be up to Melinda, how she wants to handle it. You know, if it's salvageable, absolutely, we could put it up for auction.
Okay. I trust Melinda. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else before I wipe the microphone?
Okay, now, so, uh... So, we need a motion and a second to adopt this closing of the center.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Alcacer and a second by Counselor Bradshaw to approve Agenda number 8.4 as presented concerning the community center renovation and closing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion does carry. Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Okay, moving then to Agenda item number 8.6, which is now 8.5. Discussion and possible action on scheduling a hearing under Section 3.12 of the City Charter regarding violations of the Charter by Donna Charles and authorizing any action related to a hearing. And I put this on after 8.5 was placed on it as this was, I, this was brought to my attention by a member of the community, Mr. Mata, and you've got his...
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, who is this?
This is Counselor Charles.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. You have a question?
I would like to cut to the chase on this item in consideration of time. I move that I be investigated under the 312 process. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, now, that's a surprise. Okay. Who did the second?
Me.
Counselor.
Counselor. Oh, okay. All right. So, we need a discussion. So, I wanted to show the document. Crystal? Well, I sent it to Sandra. Yeah. And she sent it out to everybody, didn't you? Yeah, this morning.
The document that you gave me?
The letter, the actual letter in question. I just wanted everybody to see it.
That was confidential. So, I didn't, it's only in your packet as confidential. So, only y'all see it.
Okay. Okay. So, that was what the...
I couldn't put it out there.
Okay. All right. So, I got you. So, that was the, that was the issue, that that was, and just a little background on that. Anyway, this was brought to my attention by Resident Eric Mata in response to an ethics complaint.
Mayor, I've already made a motion that I want to be investigated. I don't think we need to hear that.
Point of order.
I felt like I needed to give some background.
We're allowed to discuss any item that's on...
So, it was a motion and a second, and now there's discussion. So, that's what I was trying to fill in. Because people are like, well, what's going on, I think? I don't know. That's what I would say. Because this has caught me by surprise. I really thought it wouldn't go forward at all. So... Anyway, this, this was a document that, um, I guess there was an ethics complaint filed in, I think, early January. I'm not sure. Anyway, this was just brought to my attention, that there was a release of a document that said, not a public record. And so, I wondered why that could be released within an ethics complaint to seven members and the Ethics Board in parallel to my releasing attorney-client privilege on the next one. So, the next agenda item.
Do you want my response to that?
Not necessarily, unless you want to. But I mean, that was, it was just, it was a, it was a legal memorandum that was, that was published out to, within your response. And anyway, it said attorney-client work product, not a public record. And that was what I was questioning.
Mayor, I call the question. You're, you're litigating this instead of, I don't think it's appropriate discussion. It was a motion to have it investigated and hearing if necessary. I call the question. I don't think further comment is appropriate, especially coming from one who put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Alcacer. Mr. Zach, would you please just give a ruling on that? Since I don't know, if I'm not allowed to speak, I won't. But that's usually the modus operandi here. Go ahead, Mr. Zach. We can't have any other discussion. I can't discuss anymore, according to Ms. Alcacer and her opinion. Okay.
Is he muted? He's not muted.
No, he's not muted.
Charlie, can you hear us?
Charlie.
Hello?
Hit a hold of him.
I am. I'm texting him.
Mayor, if I may...
Yes, go ahead. We're waiting for Mr. Zach.
Mr. Zach to jump in. I just would like to reiterate my comments from the opening of the meeting, that I think these 312 hearings, these investigations are a waste of taxpayer dollars. And we continue to, you know, play these games and jump through hoops to, for what cause? What benefit is it to the citizens? I just think this is ridiculous that we do this, we continue to do this.
I was not asking for the 312 hearing. Mayor, the mayor was, and I'm, I'm, I am going along with it.
And we have citizen comments?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, you know, necessarily. Anyway, I was just reflecting the next agenda item that y'all wanted to do a 312 on me. So, yes, Mr. Johnson, come on up. I don't want a 312 hearing for either one, because it is a waste of taxpayer dollars.
The measure has already been made, and we don't need to hear the merits of it.
Oh, Ms. Charles, please. I've got Mr. Johnson that wants to speak right now. Let him speak. Honestly.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. I'm concerned that the motion, which is then followed by council discussion, completely obviated any citizen input or comment. It completely violated 2840, which citizens can comment on any agenda item. That was bypassed, and I don't think that's right. I know there are citizens here that would like to make a comment on this.
Okay.
Myself included.
All right.
Mayor, I also have two written comments here.
On this particular agenda item? Okay. If you want to pass it down, I'll read it. Thank you. Oh, I've got those already, I think.
Charlie's phone is off.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, you didn't have anything else to say? Okay, go ahead. This, this is, we do need to have, hear from the citizens on this one. This is a 3.3.12 for... Yeah. I've got both of these already.
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield.
Yes, sir.
The allegations, I was one of the complainants on the ethics complaint against Counselor Charles.
Okay.
And I received the document as her response. And it clearly says that that document is not for public release. And so, that is a very, very clear violation of the City Charter. There's, I mean, it's, it's on its face a violation. And while I hate to encourage another 3.12 hearing, because you've got to have an investigating officer, which is a lawyer, and then you've got to have another lawyer as the designated official, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars. But in light of the agenda item that is listed as 8.5, I think this one should proceed. That's my comment.
Okay. All right. Yes, any other public comment?
Yes, I have some on my phone.
All right. Mr. Bowle? I'm going to call on Mr. Bowle right now.
Turn it off. He can go to the mic. He just can't go to the mic.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Evan Bowle from Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. It actually was a strange twist of events that Councilwoman Charles would like to proceed with a 312 hearing against her. In, I had a, some words in the effect that, in the event that she would fight it. But I would find that a couple of questions to be raised, that why would a set of citizens hold on to a privileged document for so long before bringing it to the attention of anyone on the council or staff by that event? That raises many red flags. Coincidental timing, I don't believe so. I think that if this indeed is a blatant violation, proceed with a 312 hearing. But do note that as part of a fair and transparent council, all 312 hearings must proceed then as such to avoid the appearance of favoritism, going back, starting with Benny Martinez. We, I don't believe that though it is tumultuous and pretty hard on the community to go through these hearings, it is part of what it is to govern. It is part of ensuring accountability on the council. And I believe that if one happens, then the other should happen. And thus, by now, we have three total to be had. So, that is my view in all fairness, putting my own opinions aside, because personally, I don't feel like 312 should be had. But I am for the rule of law and transparency and honesty.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowle. Really appreciate it. Yes, Ms. Bacon?
Mayor Council, I'm trying to get you an attorney. His phone is, is like dead. His phone is, is like dead. So I'm contacting Pat Bernal right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, is that what happened? Okay. I was wondering, because it shows the green light.
His cellphone. My apologies, his cellphone. I'm trying to get a hold of him on his cellphone to say something's wrong.
Thank you. I think she, I think she's already...
I have news, too.
Okay, so I don't need to look at mine anymore? Okay, okay.
Charlie, if you can hear us, please log out and just log back in.
He can hear us right now.
Okay.
He, he's answering, and we're not able to hear him.
Okay. Can you log out and log back in? Because we can hear the other two counselors just fine. We just can't hear you for some reason, and you're not showing muted. So can you log out and log back in, please?
Got something coming in.
Yes.
He's done it.
Thank you. Um, we'll hear from you, Ms. Bacon, and then we'll hear from the attorney. Because we can't seem to...
Hold on.
Charlie, how about, how about now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I don't know what went wrong with my microphone. So the last I heard, there was a question about procedural issue on a, on, um, on a motion. That's the last question I heard from the mayor before the conversation continued on. So what is the exact question now?
Well, I think, as Mr. Johnson came up, we did not have citizen input on this, and Ms. Alkisser called the question immediately, almost immediately after Ms. Charles moved to, um, to have a 312 hearing on herself, and Ms. Rodriguez seconded it. And then I started talking, and she said I couldn't talk. And then she moved the question, and, you know, that's when we were trying to get a hold of you. And so then Mr. Johnson came up and, and made a very good point. We never heard from the citizens. And that's, that is, that is part of our rules of procedure. So, um, I've let him speak, and Mr. Bowles spoken, and now we've got Ms. Bacon. So what would you add to that?
I would, I would add, I would add nothing. These, really, these aren't legal questions. These are procedural questions that...
Okay. Yeah, all right. Well, then we're gonna proceed with...
...the governing body need to, need to deal with.
I think the only legal question that came, that surfaced was whether or not the item was germane to the actual agenda item. It's the only legal question I heard.
Again, that's, you know, it's not a legal question. If, it's really, if, if someone believes it's not germane to the agenda item, that's more, it's more of a, of a, of a, um, conduct of the meeting question. If, if, if it goes beyond what I believe is allowed to be discussed based on the agenda posting, I will certainly interject myself. But otherwise, it's up to this governing body to determine how they want to conduct their meeting.
Via motion, or as far as whether or not it's germane, I guess, what you're saying?
If someone made a point of order with respect to whether or not the comment was germane to the, to the issue on the table, the mayor gets to rule on that. If the governing body disagrees with that ruling, they can appeal that ruling and vote whether or not they agree with it. That's how rubber rules of order works.
Correct.
But I am not, I am not the parliamentarian.
Okay. All right. We're gonna continue with the public comment. Ms. Bacon?
So, first of all, as far as what Mr. Bowles said, with this is, these 312 hearings, and this is the way the law works, really, this is very dysfunctional city. All of these 312 hearings are really costing the taxpayers a lot of money that could be going to other, other things. With regard to the ethics complaint, it was filed by me. I was one, there were seven of us that filed the ethics complaint on February 11th. It was 708 pages, and it was filed against Donna Charles, Monica Alkisser, and the city manager, Kelly Cunslar. They responded to us, and in Counselor Charles' response, she... Point of order.
Not trying to...
She included attorney-client, not attorney-client. It was attorney-client work product, not a public record, and should not be disseminated. That was specifically on that document. The 312 hearing they're trying to bring against you never even had any of that on the documentation. So I ask that all of this drama and expense be done away with, and that the council come together and listen to the citizens so that we can make our city better, that we can make businesses and people want to come here, not move away. And that's what's happening with this city council. The mayor, it wasn't even on that documentation with Donna Charles, it was. So let's just do away with these 312 hearings, have people come to city council meetings, and let's make Leon Valley a really good place to live and work and want to be a part of. We can do it, but this has got to stop.
Mm-hmm.
It's got to stop. The residents do not want their tax dollars spent in this way. And for Donna Charles to say, out of nowhere, just investigate me, how many thousands of dollars, or is all of this going to cost? There are people in trouble. We need leaders. Lead. Stop fighting. Lead.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it was on the agenda by the mayor. The mayor put the item on the agenda to consider a 312 hearing against me, and I voted to have myself investigated, so...
Okay, and I'll just follow up with that. I mean, Ms. Charles, that was not... My intention was just to bring out what was just brought out, the hypocrisy of, and again, a 312 is forfeiture. It's forfeiture of our office. So you want to kick me off the council for quote-unquote attorney-client privilege, which I still don't see it in the bills, but anyway, we'll have to look at that if we go forward. And so this was just brought to my attention, that this was really, I didn't know about it until, like, whenever this was, a week or two ago. So I had no earthly idea that you were gonna, um, move for a 312 hearing on your own, you know? Because I, that's, you know, I just was trying to bring out the fact that this had occurred under your watch as well. So, Mr. Mata?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Mayor.
Could we force the no shouting?
Yeah, rule, please, that you've, that you've repeated a couple of times. She got emotional. This is a very emotional...
I realize that.
You know, and so I'm gonna, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know...
I'm just asking for you to follow your own rules.
It's passionate, so... Please. Thank you, Ms. Kinsler. I do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mayor Mata, Cantorfield.
Okay, just, yeah. We're gonna keep our, we're gonna keep civil, and, yeah, there you go. Just, just so we...
I find it, I find it very interesting.
Kum byah.
The city manager wants to bring that up. Mr. Blackmore, who's sitting here now, has come up many times and, and had outbursts in a very uncivil manner. But again...
Okay, but we're just gonna keep it to this topic.
This is about a double standard, okay? Yeah, I, I, it's very interesting how it becomes about staying on topic when it doesn't favor a certain, certain group here, right? Okay, so I was the one that sent that message a couple of weeks ago to the ma, to the mayor and Mr. Bradshaw. I was also a party to that ethics complaint. It was very evident, especially having served on the Home Rule Charter, but especially after having seen where the case was going in regards to the ethics investigation on the mayor, um, what, what a double standard there was in regards to this. Yes, I did think about it for a while. I've taken the position that we should end this targeted behavior against your colleagues on council. It's juvenile. It wastes taxpayer money. Um, you know, imagine the man-hours from staff that go into it, you know, the cost, the legal cost involved, and here we are again. And as Mrs. Bacon spoke about, I think really the purpose of this is to demonstrate the partisanship and the games. Citizens are really upset about the games being played by you guys. And I, I don't, I'm not comfortable coming up here and saying this, but it's childish. I think I said that after the 312 last fall. This is childish. This is the kind of stuff people did in high school and middle school. You're here to work for us. We are the citizens. And, and you keep this up, and it's interesting to see how you don't want to be kept accountable. It's, it's about accountability. You, you, you say it's okay to be, to, to hold certain members up here on the dais accountable, but when it comes to yourselves, you're, you're not willing to do that. So if, if need be, then we go this direction, because I don't sense staff and council members that have started this, I don't sense that, that you want to back off of it. You want to continue wasting our money. You want to continue basically saying that the vote of the members of this community doesn't matter, that you will do as you please. And again, I remind you, if things flip around, how would you feel to find yourself as the minority being targeted by a majority? You wouldn't feel very good about that. The citizens are not convinced by your arguments. So cut it out.
All right, thank you.
I would like to respond.
All right, Ms. Charles, go ahead.
Uh, if you notice the agenda item, it says action on scheduling a hearing, and it's put on the agenda by the mayor. So in that respect, I am taking responsibility, and I'm asking to be investigated.
Okay. All right. Yes, Counselor Bradshaw, and then I...
So, I'm unclear on the motion, Mayor. Asking to be investigated by who? Are we, is the motion include hiring a disinterested investigator and scheduling the, the actual agenda item was possible action on scheduling a hearing for the 312? So is, are we gonna, is there a date?
That was the intent.
Okay, that was the intent. So what, what date are we gonna select, and who, who will investigate this?
I tell you, I was hoping that, you know, agenda item, this agenda item wouldn't, wouldn't have, and I put this on very late, and I know the manager's not happy with me, because, you know, I put it on very, very late because I was trying to work with another counselor to see if we could do away with 8.6 for the reasons that we've stated. You know, we've got to stop this nightmare. We've got to stop it. We've got to come together. And can we do a retreat? Can we do a something, a mediation? Can we do something other than an expensive 312 hearing that only destroys our community, gives us a black eye, and is expensive? And it just continues to rip and tear our citi, city apart. I was unsuccessful in that, and I'm very disappointed. That's why it was so late in coming, because I was trying to work with somebody else to see if we can, you know, just get rid of it. Let's not, let's not even go here. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. So, I didn't know what else to do. I wanted to honor, you know, and again, I, that was the first time I'd seen that document. I had not seen that document, and I did think that's kind of weird. So, anyway, okay, yes, Counselor?
I have a, just a couple of questions. I under, excuse me, my asthma's bothering me today. I understand that the citizens are talking about, and, and I keep hearing it constantly, our money, my money, our money, you know, that, that's the constant topic. And I get it's their money, but the five of us, it's also our money, too. So it's not just the people in the audience. It's also the money of the people...
It's the taxpayers.
Yes.
Everybody.
So, you know, it, it, in a sense, kind of bothers me. The, the main theme has always been, well, we don't appreciate you spending our money this way, or our money, our money, our money. It's also the arm, the, our money of the people sitting up here. And no, I don't appreciate 312 either, having gone through the first one. But I just don't see a way that, like Ms. Bacon says, believe it or not, I'm gonna agree with her, I just don't see a way that we can come together. We've tried the question of the retreat at the very beginning, when people got on, and there were dates conflicting, you know...
Okay, but that was six months ago, and I think we ought to try again.
And then my, then my last question is on Donna.
Lot cheaper.
Yeah, my question is, who did Donna turn this document into? Did she turn it into, like, say, for example, Ms. Kinsler, and she was responsible for redacting something, or did she turn it over to an attorney? That was, I was just curious, because I didn't get...
I don't know. I know. She turned it over to the city secretary because the Ethics Review Board requested it.
Okay.
So she turned it over to the city secretary.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
I did not, I did not turn it over to the public. I turned it to the city secretary.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mata, he's one of the people that presented this to me, if you'll clarify that, or add to it, or whatever.
The idea that, that we should put off the blame on the city secretary for an action taken by Donna Charles herself that she should be responsible for. You want to play games? No, don't, don't interrupt me.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Please do not interrupt me.
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Charles, I'm gonna let Mr. Mata have his turn, and then you can speak after him, okay?
Any comments that are untrue is unbelievable.
Well, then you can, you can respond to it. You can respond to it. But just keep it, again, what I understood...
All right, I think I'm being very factual here.
Okay. Just keep it to the facts.
I see this is, where this is going, and I brought it up just a couple of minutes ago. It's accountability. Now you want to pass it off on staff, on the city secretary, who I've no doubt works very hard, especially in light of all these investigations and hearings that are non-stop, constant ORRs. You guys would not have the scrutiny if you would behave yourself and work for the city. Work for the city. You know, what I find, what I find really...
Excuse me.
Please don't interrupt me.
Let her, let her finish, and then I'm gonna let you speak.
What I find really interesting is the attitude of Councilwoman Rodriguez in her statement about, "It's our money, too." You decided to run for public office. You decided to behave in this manner. I, you know, I hate to bring this up, but there are many citizens that are aware that you have played a role in targeting citizens now, casting aspersions on us, trying to slander us, trying to, trying to...
Mr. Mata, Mr. Mata, we want to keep it to the, excuse me, excuse me, if you'll keep it to three, to the 312. Don't go off on any tangents.
Sure. Well, I, I think plenty of citizens see that this attempt to blame the city secretary is petty.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not right. Own up to it. Own up to it. If you expect certain other members that you've decided to target on this council to own up to their, their, you know, the accusations you brought against them, then, then, then take it. You are responsible. You are the one that entered that response. And, and if you weren't, then I have to sit here and wonder, well, how much of a role do you play in, in these response, working with staff and having staff help you out? You can't have it both ways. I can't help but be suspicious of the role that certain staff members then might be playing in these response.
I knew that would be...
So you gotta decide, what, what way is it?
You cannot say anything without, you cannot say anything or speak a word or post anything.
Excuse me, Ms. Charles, hang on just a second. Let him, are you finished?
Yeah, I...
Okay, if you're finished, I'll let her speak.
Again, I was the one that sent those emails because of my concerns and the hypocrisy here. And yes, I will speak to that, because I was, I was a party to this ethics complaint that was entered, and I did see this evidence.
This one?
And it was very blatant that you sent out in your response billing statements that were clearly marked attorney-client privilege, and you violated it yourself. So understand the double standard in trying to... So understand the double standard in trying to, to, to pass it off on the city secretary. Own up to it.
Okay, all right.
There's no double standard, I'm asking for an investigation.
Anything else, Ms. Charles? Okay, I see two people that want to speak again. I will allow it this last time, but we can't just keep doing, you know, because I've got a bunch of other, and I don't know. It's, but go ahead, Mr. Bull, and then Ms. Bacon, and keep it short and sweet, and then we'll decide what y'all want to do. There is a motion and a second on the table. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and Counsel. The question, and I, I, I would, as someone who's dealt with chain of custody in my experiences impressionally, I imagine it was questioned by Councilwoman Catherine to determine the chain of custody of that letter, and brought me back to my question of why would a resident hold on to it for so long? The other comment I'd like to make is that actually it, it would shock me that, and I can't believe I'll be saying this, it shocks me that the mayor would be putting on the 312 hearing discussion at the behest of a resident who rarely has facts to back up anything to make a point that it's hypocritical to have these. That's, it, you're supposed to be the mayor and of the council to not be playing these games that citizens would be playing. I deal with it daily, and it is, as the rare minority in the community to stand up for certain principles and for the truth. It, it really does shock me to learn that these two agenda items are next to each other just as a, a political chicken game. And I believe Councilwoman Donna Charles has called the bluff, and I believe that the dice have been rolled, and as a council, y'all need to deal with what the dice have rolled to y'all. I appreciate that, thank you.
The, again, let me just reiterate, the only reason that this was put on was because of the, the other one was put on first, the three, the 3.12 against me. And when I, again, I don't want to repeat myself, but I didn't know about it until Mr. Mata brought it up, and I just thought it was hypocrisy to try to kick me off or something, that somebody was doing something similar on the council.
Mayor, I don't know if this will help, but Ms. Poselé had something to add.
Well.
Here, sorry.
What is it?
Well, I, I mean, if, I mean, the stuff was provided to me-
Uh huh.
Because that's what the policy says, that the person, you know, you've been through it. You're supposed to respond to me and, and, oh.
Okay.
You have, the person has 14 days to respond, and that stuff is supposed to come to the city secretary, but the city secretary is not on the committee, and the policy does, it is very clear that those documents are confidential, so I do not go through them. I'm, I am just an employee at that point, and my job is just to push the paperwork out.
I understand that.
It is not my job to review or anything.
Right, I got you.
It is given to the eth, the temporary ethics compliance officer and the committee and those involved, but not, I do not go through them.
I understood that.
Nor do I redact or anything.
So I guess it's, it went through the seven people that complained, and then the five people on the ethics board, so that's, that's, that's the release, right?
Right, and the only instructions I got was from, from Mr. Pajorkas was to get it out.
Mm-hmm, all right, got you. Okay. Thank you.
So that seems very clear, that the city secretary doesn't edit what Council Charles puts out, she just puts it out. So Donna Charles, council, recalled, Council Charles is responsible for what she wrote and was disseminated. This was actually filed with the ethics when all of the other ethics review was going on over you. And we withdrew this complaint, 708 pages, because we felt in watching the first ethics meetings, that the ethics review board were not fair, that literally one of the ethics review board, the only question that she asked throughout the whole hearing was how much Council Bradshaw was on, on Nextdoor, and she actually had a, a campaign sign, a huge sign of Council Rodriguez in her yard during the time of the ethics hearing. So we felt very uncomfortable, feeling like that was going to be received in a way, in an honest, transparent way. I'm speaking, Council Charles.
Oh, wait, let's keep it down, keep it down. Let's, let's, let's let her finish, and we'll call a question. Go ahead.
Okay. And we felt like it wouldn't be fair, but that these ethics complaints, violations, were so serious that we have followed through in other manners. We did not want to put the mayor in a bad position with regard to this because of what she was going through and the ethics complaints that were going on, so she did not know anything about this. As this has gone on, when we found out through all of these disastrous virtual meetings, when citizens can't even be heard, that they were going through, when we have recalled counselors that don't even show up or even go on video, removing a mayor. So that's why we, we, we took our ethics review complaint back-
This is way off topic and unfair.
Because we wanted to be reviewed by a unbiased legislative body.
Okay.
And so, no, there's no, the no shadiness going on here. The mayor did not know about this until very recently.
Okay, thank you. I was letting her finish. Please state your, oh, you've got something else to add? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. The difference is, is that Counselor Charles did turn the, I'll just use this. No, we don't have to clean it. Counselor Charles did turn her paperwork into me, and maybe she assumed that it was going to be me to do the redactions, because, I mean, this again is still another first. Then I gave it to the attorney that's representing the ethics commission, or committee board. That's where it went, and that's, you know, I, I don't know, but I don't think that there was any intent from, I mean, that's my, that's my opinion, but Counselor Charles did give it to me and the city, and maybe that was where she thought it was going to be redacted. But again, I'm not on the committee, it went to the attorney. The attorney gave me the direction to send it out.
Okay, now we're, we're, we're finished with the, and I, I have a bunch of comments, but it's actually for the next one, not this one, so, citizen comments. Okay, so you repeat your motion, Ms. Charles, or is there any, Mr. Hody, did you have anything? Okay. And Mr. Char, okay. I wasn't sure who's gonna vote on all of this, but anyway, would you please state your, your motion and your second? Ms. Charles?
I move that I be investigated under the 312 process.
Okay.
I got a question for Mr. Zek.
Okay, go ahead.
Since the 312 is about Donna Charles and for Donna Charles, should she be able to vote on the issue, and furthermore, should be, she be able to make a motion on the issue?
Yeah.
Yes, she can do that.
And she can vote on it as well?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. She could certainly make the motion, for sure. I'm unsure about the answer to the question of voting on it.
I don't mind recusing myself in the vote.
And so I still, I still second her, Mayor.
Yes, I understand, so it's probably would be the safest to recuse yourself? Is that what you'd say, Mr. Zek?
I didn't, I didn't hear that, Mayor.
I said, would it be the safest to err on the safe side of her, of Ms. Charles, to recuse herself?
Right. Certainly, yeah, the, the conservative approach would be that she not vote on the matter.
That's what I would, all right. So we have a motion by Ms. Charles and a second by Ms., excuse me, Counselor Charles and Counselor Alcazar.
Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, Rodriguez. It's getting late, it's 10 after. To call a 312 hearing and investigate Donna Charles on the related issue that we just discussed. Ms. Poselé, if you'll please call the roll.
Was the motion to call a 312 hearing, or was the motion for an investigation? That's what I wrote, investigation. Did I write it wrong? Is that what you have? That's what I have too. An investigation under 312 is what I have.
Okay, and I will restate it to call an investigation for the 312 hearing. Is that right? Okay, you'll call the roll.
That's what I said, investigation of the 312 hearing.
Yes, ma'am, we've got that, I got that corrected.
Captain Rodriguez?
Yes.
Captain Charles?
Abstain. Yes.
And Captain Bradshaw?
No.
Okay. Okay, the motion carries four ayes and one nay.
Three ayes.
I'm sorry. Three ayes, one, yeah, I'm, I'm, my brain is starting to, to get a little crazy. All right, so it's three ayes, one abstention, and one nay. And the, it does, the motion does pass. All right, and moving to the original 312 that was filed, 8.6 now, discussion and possible action on the scheduling of a hearing under section 312 of the city charter regarding violations of the charter by the mayor and authorizing any action related to a hearing. All right, Ms. Rodriguez, go ahead and start.
Okay, Mayor, on or about March 9th, the Ethics Review Board determined by a motion that Riley had violated the applicable charter rule, which was the 3.09E, the Ethics Review Board voted 4-0-0 in favor of the motion. They decided a remedial action was their recommendation, none recommended, the Ethics Review Board determined that its opinion constituted a sufficient reprimand. But if you go back and you review the charter, so that being said, according to the Leon Valley Home Rule Charter, section 3.04, the city council shall be the sole judge of the election and whether the qualifications set herein and by law have been met by its members and of the grounds for forfeiture of their offices. And that would be for the violation of 3.09. Contrary to popular belief, this is not something I wanted to do, this is not something that, oh, gosh, I hope that, you know, we can punish the mayor further. But I'm just trying to follow what the charter says, and that says at a 3.0, I mean, if you violated the 3.9, that the remaining council is responsible for 3.04, which is, we have to make a determination if in fact you did violate, is it grounds for removal, or just a further reprimand of some sort.
I thought 3.04 was already done with, the last, on April 13th. Maybe I'm wrong, so, anyway, I don't have the charter in front of me. All right, yes, Counselor Bradshaw.
I thought it was curious, Mayor, how quickly that Donna Charles approved, made the motion last, and Catherine Rodriguez seconded it, and then also Monica Alcazar called the vote. You cannot convince me that that was not pre-planned. You cannot convince me that they did not coordinate on that. Furthermore, the, the thing that Counselor Rodriguez just read, I also believe was pre-planned and pre-written, prepared before this meeting, the, the plan, and also the plan to blame Ms. Poselé for releasing the information. This is all bogus. This council is dysfunctional, and this will be your legacy. I'm talking to you. This will be your legacy, that you are a part of this dysfunctional council who has torn the city apart. And if you think that, you know, get rid of Benny Martinez, things will get better. Get rid of mayor, things will get better. They will not. We will continue to come and speak up for justice, and this counselor's voting to get rid of elected officials is, it's disgusting. It's disgusting how bad this city council has been. And I know for a fact that it was a setup from the beginning against Benny Martinez. I was there.
Keep it down, yeah, just, I know it's an emotional thing, but we've got to keep it down.
So I would like to make a motion that we dismiss this item with no action.
Mayor, I never once said it was Sandra's, Ms. Poselé's guilt or responsibility. I just simply asked a question of who Ms. Charles submitted the paperwork to. That was it. So backtrack your words.
Okay. All right.
I have a motion on the table.
All right. That motion was to-
That we dismiss this allegation.
Okay.
Dismiss this item with no action.
All right, well, you got to get a second. All right, there's not going to be a second, Mr. Bradshaw, so it dies for a lack of a second, so, okay. Any other questions, comments? I've got a slew of comments to read by citizens if there's not any other discussion. Mr. Hody, you seconded it, so would you like to add?
That's correct, I did. So if I'm, I am part of an executive session, and then I go home and I post it on social media, or I release the information to somebody else, accountability, I'm not supposed to do that. Now, I would like to know exactly what occurred that led to the Ethics Commission to their ruling. That's what I want to know. That's it. So that's why I'm suggesting, that's why I seconded the motion, or seconded the agenda My motion, I will make the motion to proceed with an investigation through the 312 process in our city charter to determine if the Ethics Commission's ruling against Mayor Riley warrants any further action. That's it. This is not a, she's guilty, like everyone would have, would believe, the way that I think. Wrong. Incorrect. Incorrect. Incorrect assessment. That is not what this is for. I've lived here 25 years, the mayor has been mayor for 16 years, I voted for her every time. I have not been against her, I've tried to work with her, she's worked with me, we've had nice conversations, and this idea that this is some kind of a target, for me, anyway, is wrong. I'm telling you, it is wrong. You don't know. You don't know. So, anyway, that's, that's my motion, is that we look into it and see whether or not there was anything that occurred that warrants this. Maybe there's not, maybe there is. Accountability, that's all.
Mr. Bradshaw?
If you want to know what the ethics finding was, you can read the report, you can talk to the Ethics Committee, you can find out what it is, that we don't need to do this, we don't need to waste more taxpayer money to do this. This is going to be what, another $50,000, $100,000? And, and it's not my money, it's their money, it's the, the taxpayers and the citizens that we represent. You know, we're throwing it down the toilet when we could be remodeling the pools, and remodeling the conference center, and fixing the parks, and doing other things that are good, but instead, we're wasting time and wasting money on this. The citizens do not want this. Go read in Nextdoor, look at the, what the citizens want. They do not want this. And yes, I do think you are a part of this, I think you are put up to this, because they appointed you to their position, and we had no discussion about it, it was pull the name out of the hat, and look, I have a speech prepared. It was all a setup from the beginning, and you cannot tell me otherwise.
On this particular agenda item, if there's any comments or citizen comments, we'll open, unless Ms. Charles or Ms. Alcazar, I'm sorry, do you have anything else to add? I guess not. Okay, so if there's anybody else that wants to talk on this agenda item, please come forward, and then I, and once we hear from everybody in the chambers, then I've got these things to, these to read from citizens that have emailed in. Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'm Dr. David Edwards. I was on the council. I have observed this entire political gotcha game from ground zero.
Excuse me, you gotta, yeah.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta get closer to the mic.
Okay. This young lady here said in the presence of this gentleman that she was going to get Benny Martinez. Then, when she was confronted about it, she lied, said she couldn't remember.
Okay.
I, this whole thing goes back to Kelly Kinsler being selected as the city manager. And then she appoints Mr. Savagio, her student, to be the chief of police. And it just goes on and on and on, you know? It's just a political game to take control of the city for certain people's benefits. Chris Riley, everybody knows, has never done an unethical thing in her life. She's given her, her family, and, and she have given years and years to try to do things to make this city better. She has never done anything unethical. Anybody in this city knows that. It's preposterous. It's political gotcha. You know, I've got the votes, so I'm going to do in Benny Martinez, and I'm going to attack the mayor, and then I'm going to have total control over the city. Well, unfortunately for you guys, the citizens don't believe this nonsense. And if we ever allowed to actually have an election, it's, it's going to be all overturned. And this is just despicable behavior.
Okay, Mr. Ball, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It, it seems in sitting down and observing, as I do a lot, even just this evening, on the topic of the 312 hearing investigation into the mayor, when it comes to talking about facts, when it comes to talking about how we got here, when it comes to talking about what was done, what, how we feel, it, we forget that there are casualties in all of this. Yours truly speaking as one of them. I have always asked questions before speaking on a position. When it came time to discuss, when it was brought to the, the group of us citizens on next door about the mayor being targeted for a 312 hearing, my first question was, where's the proof of this? I didn't think it was possible. I advise a lot about maintaining facts versus going after your rivals, if that's a thing. But instead of being answered with sources, you know, sources were hidden eventually in the push for the truth, I am banned from next door forever, as the rumors might be now. Yes. And some council members know this already, but I don't keep, let that stop me. I'm still actively asking questions because through the course of this whole thing from Benny Martinez to the mayor to Donna Charles, citizens, for sure, on my end, are receiving information that is privileged and no doubt, which is why I am sure I don't get any sources. If they were to come to me with their source of information, if they were to come to the citizens with their sources of information, we could have a healthy dialogue without the sensationalism. We could check our emotions and opinions at the door, and we could all respect that. But with one side bringing facts and civility and respect to the door and the other's not, it causes this unbalanced, you know, disaster on the council between the three other council members here tonight and in the citizens. We just had citizens talking off tangents. It's ridiculous. And so I want there to be some civility on the council. If we cannot have it in the citizens, do what you were elected to do and be the better of us. Because so far, everyone, everyone in, in some fashion has been pulled down to our level, and it saddens me. And I will forever keep sticking up for what we should all be, and I hope that y'all see that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mata.
You know, my motivation is not to come here and address other citizens. I'm not looking to target other citizens, but we had a citizen that just spoke right now, and he's looking for facts. Well, here's your facts. For the citizens of Leon Valley, here's your facts. We see it to have come true. Okay? We're being called liars and such, that's fine. But here's your proof. And Councilman Hody, the proof is in the pudding. You are on record with votes that clearly show that you support this madness. I didn't know you, but I met you at a Leon Valley Historical Society meeting at the library. You already knew my name, I don't know how. I didn't really know who you were. Found that interesting. But I said, I really hope that you contribute in a positive way to restoring sanity upon council. And I'm sad to say, you have done the opposite. You know? It's one thing to come across refined and careful in your words, but what are your actions? And, and the proof is clear and evident. Taxpayer dollars, why do we continue to waste taxpayer dollars with this ridiculousness? Work for this community. Work to better the community. Do you not think that citizens, did, did any of you think that the citizens didn't have a right to be upset about this and to be passionate about it? You know? You expect us to hold some higher standard as the people, and yet, what do we see? If you're supposed to be our example in some way, which obviously is not the case, you're our servants, and you're not behaving yourself. We have a right to be upset about this. Listen to the people. Put the people first. You are not doing your job. You are not being accountable to your constituents by going about this behavior. Please. We've implored you since, since the hearing last summer, and you've continued investigations, hearings. Right now, I just witnessed a situation where the chief of police, who's a staff member, called Mrs. Posale back to the office right there. And when she came out, what did she do? She came out to assert that it might have been her fault, or that maybe Councilwoman Donna Charles might have mistaken it. I've said this from last summer. Staff, stop playing political games. Stay out of it. You're here to serve us. That is not right, what you've done, what you just did. And we see it. And we've seen it since last summer. Please.
Thank you. You can't ask him a question, but you can have a, you can respond, I mean, you can make a statement, yeah. This is not...
I would like to make a statement.
Okay, go ahead.
With regard to some of the citizen comment, there is a significant difference between servant, being a servant of somebody and being subservient. We do have a voice. And I guess for you, it'd be okay as long as you do what you say.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one else, then I will go ahead and start reading the comments that we've gotten through the email. Let me put my glasses on. It's now 10:31, and this is from Josh Stevens' comment. Facts matter. Initially, Donna Charles filed an 18-pronged ethics complaint against Mayor Chris Riley. The complaint would be best described as a gripe list, a list of things she personally did not like and wanted to whine and complain about. Nowhere in Donna Charles's initial ethics complaint did she allege that Mayor Riley released a billing statement containing attorney-client privilege information. Nowhere. Facts matter. Instead, all of the 18 ethics complaints were dismissed. A new complaint was morphed so that Donna Charles didn't look completely ridiculous for her complaint, oh, excuse me. And for all of the wasted tax dollars spent on the Ethics Committee meeting and legal counsel. Throughout Mayor Riley's hearing, an ethics committee, the ethics committee which appeared and actually were a group of partisan appointees, demonstrated that facts did not matter to them. They were, they were there to disregard facts and protect the oligarchy-style council members that appointed them. A letter from the Attorney General was presented to the committee. It stated that Ryan Henry's billing statement must be released to the public. Additionally, the Texas Attorney General's Office ruled that there was no attorney-client privilege information within Ryan Henry's billing statements. In fact, they, the word, they, they word there, that's not right, was not a matter. What, excuse me, let me read that again. In fact, they word there was not a single word that could be considered attorney-client privilege in 30 pages of billing statements. Facts matter. The Ethics Committee disregarded the facts. Attorney Ryan Henry, who went to the same college as the city manager, dissented from the highest lawyer in the state of Texas, the Attorney General. He stated, oh, well, there could have been some attorney-client privilege information, that's in quotes, contained within the attorney billing statements released by Mayor Riley to a group of citizens. Bam. Somehow, that magically proved there was attorney-client privilege content in the emails sent by the mayor to concerned taxpayers. However, he did not ever identify any specific line or item that would, could, or was privileged. If this same attorney billing statement went for review before the Attorney General, Ryan Henry would have to identify exactly what was privileged, why it was privileged, and testify that the privilege had been maintained. This would be impossible for the documents Mayor Riley gave to the concerned citizens. Facts matter. Though we could have a 312 hearing regarding these attorney billing statements, the non-accountable, divisive, childish, self-seeking, and immature political hacks on this council should not be part of it. An impartial jury or judge should be the evaluators of the hearing and provide due process during this hearing. And facts should be evaluated based on evidence presented and legal experts, not previous college acquaintances of our city manager. Okay, so that's three minutes, and I will respect the three-minute time limit and move on. Next, this is from Sarah Smart. Citizens to be Heard. Ms. Charles keeps pointing out that she voted to be investigated. Does she understand that she only has two options? One, forfeit her seat. Two, have a public hearing. Why is she acting noble by pointing out that she is moving to have an investigation? Ms. Rodriguez, I believe the "we" Ms. Bacon and Eric spoke of was in regard to the majority, not you, the minority. She speaks of those who are employed full-time, pay taxes, and contribute to society. The transparency of Councilwoman Charles and Alcacer's attempts to prevent the facts and logic behind the accusations against Charles is hilarious. To be clear, Ms. Charles has a very good reason to, to not want you, the citizens, to hear the merits of it. Quote Donna Charles at 9:35. Wow, just wow. Good evening, Mayor Riley and Council. I hope the council understands the implications of moving forward on a 312 hearing on the accusations against Mayor Riley, but does not move forward with a 312 on the striking similar complaint against Councilwoman Charles. There are similarities. There is one very crucial fact that distinguishes the complaint against Donna Charles from the complaint against Mayor Riley. If anything was clarified at Mayor Riley's ethics hearing, it was that attorney-client privilege is not something that is easily defined. Rather, it is determined on a case-by-case basis and disputed in courts every single day across the country. I myself have engaged in at least 20 discovery disputes regarding privilege over the span of my relatively short career as an attorney. Courts use their wisdom to come to a determination. When determining whether someone knowingly distributed one factor a court would weigh heavily is whether the document is clearly marked. Attorney-client work product, not a public record memorandum to client, in all uppercase font, clearly displayed on the fact of the document. Knowingly, in my opinion, should be the standard rather than what the three council members would prefer to fit their agenda. Strict liability, meaning intent or knowledge of breaking the law, does not matter, such as statutory rape or liability for injury as a result of a product's defective manufacture or design. If this council affirmatively votes to spend hard-earned tax dollars to remove the mayor, then it must also do so against Councilwoman Charles. Although I hope this council votes to put the citizens first and vote no on both of these frivolous, vindictive, and wasteful agenda items, I am disheartened to predict this council will move forward with their personal vendetta rather than respect the will of the voting and tax-paying citizens. I have never wished to be proven wrong more than now. Okay, I believe that's it. That's it on that one. This is from Drew Power. I strongly object to any actions by the city council to hold a 312 hearing on Mayor Riley on such a specious charge. And in light of the fact that the Ethics Review Board recommended no further action on the matter, the charge is specious and unfounded since Ryan Henry stated that, quote, "there may have been attorney-client privilege," unquote, contained in the billing statements, but offered no evidence whatsoever to support his statements. There is absolutely no evidence that the billing statements that were released had any privilege information in them, other than Mr. Henry's vague "may have been" statement. I strongly support Mayor Riley and, and object to, object to the actions of the members of the city council to remove our duly-elected mayor on what amounts to a spurious and unfounded charge that has been already addressed by the Ethics Board. The continued attempts to discredit the mayor by other members of the council is disgraceful. Mayor Riley has served our community loyally, listening to the citizens, and putting their needs and wants first. Next is Chris Moreno. I think this is a great waste of our taxpayer money. Why can't we focus on our pools, parks, roads, citizens, safety, and all of the other things that we should be allocating that money to improve our neighborhoods and community? We have a beautiful library, a wonderful Fourth of July, businesses that need community sport as well, support as well as city. Our pools are amazing. Raymond Rimkan, Raymond Rimkus is a beautiful park with lots of potential. The Soapbox Derby is a blast. Let's pour that 100 or some odd thousand into something that will matter. As a citizen of Leon Valley, I urge you to please reconsider pursuing the 312 hearing on our mayor. Those of us in office, those of us in office should remain unbiased and open-minded. Please be constructive, not destructive. Please work together. I am 32 years old with a family of four. We are a young family in Leon Valley and plan to stay here for a while. I know all of these people that we have in our city hall, and all of them are humans just like our mayor, our officers, our public works, and our citizens. Thanks for your time. Chris Moreno. P.S. We are ready for next year's Soapbox Derby, so please approve that. Okay. And this is by Hilda Gomez. Today's city council meeting and the focus of utilizing 312 as per the Home Rule Charter to schedule a hearing against Mayor Riley is evidence of how the elections in November, including the recall vote, are proving a crucial measure for the citizens of LV to intervene and bring back a governing body that will bring back civility, transparency, and a respectful discourse where everyone, including our mayor, is allowed to provide information and input. Equally import is regaining equal time and importance to citizens' concerns and their input. Long before COVID-19 hit our country, spreading fear, death, and suffering, our only Leon Valley City Council was embroiled in a cantankerous, disruptive, and crippling raucous that threatened our democracy and implementation of our new Home Rule Charter. Emerging problems surfaced shortly after the passing of a Home Rule Charter. Those of us who were able to witness the discussion at the annual town hall meeting were at the time hopeful that moving to Home Rule Charter... were at the time hopeful that moving to Home Rule Charter would allow Leon Valley more autonomy so citizens could have greater input to make decisions that address our community's special needs. However, who could have imagined that those in charge of implementing our city's new freedom would instead see it as an opportunity to derail the standard City Council practices, council procedures, and restrict citizen input? The new Home Rule Charter provided the city manager the opportunity to hire a lawyer for legal services, though previously such decisions ultimately involving legal charges would have included discussions via the City Council. That is, seeking the input, the advice of the mayor and the City Council. However, because the Home Rule Charter did not require Ms. Kinsler to disclose her decision, she chose not to provide her reason for seeking legal advice, nor did she share the duration of possible charges required of said legal services. The impact to city budget would later emerge as toppling over $80,000. However, the investigations and findings by Mr. Henry would not be the last word on allegations against elected member Martinez. As City Council meetings become more disruptive, council members formed sides. Citizens began to notice and pleaded for council members to try to work with one another. However, the disruptions, accusations, and motions passed, there were noted to be in violation of the Home Rule Charter function to censor our mayor and prevent her from presiding over or providing any input. Citizens initially came forth to state their concerns over what they were witnessing. Citizens stated that under the Home Rule Charter 3.08 and 3.09, the attempt to forfeit the seat of an elected official required 2/3rds vote of the City Council to forfeit a seat of a council member. However, the mayor had been blocked from speaking or voting. The vote to oust the elected council member passed by three council member votes. For any, okay. Ms. Gomez, I'm sorry, that's three minutes, and she had, gosh, a page and a half left. So, again, we're keeping the three-minute rule. This is from Rita Burnside. Good evening, everybody. I am writing you not to dispute the facts. Those will be resolved one way or another, perhaps in court. However, I want you to know that I feel about this endless dispute about and pursuit of Mayor O'Reilly. They remind me of several New Year's Symphony concerts from Vienna where they played Wohhan Strauss, Perpetuum Mobile, Perpetual Motion, subtitled "A Musical Joke," where the melody is repeated ad nauseam until even the great conductor Karajan throws up his hands, giving up in disgust in mid-note. So please stop this political joke. Respectfully, Rita Burnside. P.S. If you're not familiar with this piece, Google Strauss, Perpetuum, P-E-R-P-E-T-U-M, Mobile, M-O-B-I-L, and K-A-R-A-J-A-N. Karajan, I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Okay. Rebecca Hammer says, "I want to voice my support for Mayor O'Reilly. I'm extremely concerned that our mayor, excuse me, I am extremely concerned that our right to duly-elect our Leon Valley officials is being dangerously undermined. We voted for Mayor O'Reilly, and we want her to remain in office until her term is up. At that time, the citizens of Leon Valley can decide if they want her to continue to serve as mayor. The citizens of Leon Valley can no longer tolerate our duly-elected officials being harassed or removed from office by a small group on the City Council. Please stop these efforts to disenfranchise us. Respectfully, Rebecca Hamner, D.M.D." Darren Hassel, "I would really like to see the mayor witch hunt stopped. If no criminal action was taken and no proof was submitted, quit wasting our money. I would love to see Leon Valley bring in more businesses. I think all the empty buildings and news headlines would bring enough embarrassment to those running the city to shift your focus and get back on track. I'll be watching with interest tonight to see what happens. Please get back to work." Danan Hassel, H-A-S-S-A-L-L. Sylvia Ray says, "Please focus entirely on the needs of the people of our city of Leon Valley. Please stop playing games with trying to get rid of our mayor. The State Attorney General's Office and our city attorney stated that no further action be taken. So with that being said, let it rest. All this is very embarrassing to our city." Next is Benny Martinez, City Council Members. Why is this City Council continuing with this destructive item? City Council in the metropolitan cities are laughing at our dysfunctional City Council, city manager, and police chief. Please listen to the people and stop this madness. How much more of our taxpayer money do you want to waste? If it wasn't for COVID-19, Councilwomen Al Quesera and Charles would have been recalled, and the city could start to heal. Hopefully, the Court of Appeals will rule in my favor, and I will be returned to my seat on council. What a waste of over $300,000 of taxpayer money. That's legal fees plus staff time and expenses for the 312 hearing to have me removed from office. Now, this council wants to do the same thing to the mayor. Another lawsuit? More money spent? When is this insanity going to stop? Are we going to waste another half million dollars before this madness stops? I urge everyone to contact the City Council members and express your feelings." Former City Council Member placed for Benny Martinez. Next is Tina Chason. "I would like for someone, mainly Matthew Hody and Catherine Rodriguez, to explain what is behind their most recent and predictable agenda item discussion and possible action on another 312, this time against Mayor O'Reilly. We already have been through a sham of a previous 312 on Mr. Martinez, started by Catherine Rodriguez with an unproven claim of sexual misconduct. That charge, in the current atmosphere of Me Too, was enough to start the ball rolling on negative public opinion. His good name and all that he accomplished in serving our city was forgotten. Now, the very same Catherine Rodriguez and appointed member, Hody, Mr. Hody, are attempting to go down a similar path with an agenda item, the discussion and possible action of pursuing a 312 on our respective mayor. This action, in my mind, is based upon the opinion of hired attorney Ryan Henry that some of his billing information might be considered privileged. The Ethics Committee rendered their verdict on this issue, again largely on the opinion of Mr. Henry, but without concrete evidence. Our State Attorney General's Office also stated, 'Without anything specifically labeled as privileged, no violation had occurred.' Yet here we are again, faced with another waste of time and taxpayer dollars, and to what end? So that our mayor be removed from office and the mayor pro tem be up for recall, Ms. Al Quesera can take over council until November? It's time to be fair, rational, and direct the council agenda to items that will enhance and improve our city. Enough is enough." Kimberly Bowle, and she had sent it to Mr. Bradshaw, and he gave it to me. "I wish I could be at tonight's City Council meeting, but due to my lupus and Bell's palsy acting up, I cannot be there. I just want to say that in my viewpoint, it's clear that a select few of the citizens leading this charge against the majority of City Council members has an extreme disdain for them, not only professionally but also personally, just as they have the same disdain towards me simply because I am Evan Bowle's mother. Now, with that being said, as for the possibility of a 312 hearing against our wonderful mayor, I would like to ask the council to have forgiveness in their hearts and follow the recommendations of the Ethics Board and not take any further action against Mayor O'Reilly. Our city needs something positive to come out of our government, not another 312 hearing. Our mayor is a wonderful person and has done a wonderful job over the last 15 years, and our city needs her. I do not want our mayor to be removed, and to Mayor O'Reilly, you have my support, and thank you for being the best mayor our city has had. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw, for always being there for us citizens. Sincerely, Kimberly Bowle, Forest Oaks, Counterfield." The next one is Jackie Conrad. "Council, it is time for sanity and civility. Your childish tantrums must end. Why are you so determined to spend more of our taxpayer monies with another insane hearing? Apparently, you get great joy from all this wasteful spending. When will you allow the citizens of Leon Valley to have a say in what happens to us? Leave the election up to the voters. Leave our mayor alone and let the residents vote their choice. Don't like the recall? Well, over 600 citizens did and voiced their opinions by signing the petition. You are trying to, very hard, to ruin our city. It's time to return Leon Valley to a peaceful place to live." Jackie and Scott Conrad in Monte Robles. This is, I think, I don't, let me, let me look at this one. I think we've already read that one, but I just want to be sure. Robin Johnson, "I strongly support Mayor O'Reilly and object to the actions of the members of the City Council to remove our duly-elected mayor on what amounts to be a spurious and unfounded charge that has already been addressed by the Ethics Board. The continued actions to discredit the mayor by other members of the council are disgraceful. Mayor O'Reilly has served our community loyally, listening to the citizens, and putting their needs and wants first." Larry and Judy Smith, "I support Mayor O'Reilly and her policies." Linda Schmidt, "My husband and I trust Mayor O'Reilly and want her to stay in office. We voted for her. Differences of opinion or personality conflicts are not reasons to force someone out mid-term. She needs to stay and let people vote the next election." 78240. William Johnson, "I strongly object to any actions by the City Council to hold a 312 hearing on Mayor O'Reilly on such specious charge, and in light of the fact that the Ethics Review Board recommended no further action on the matter. The charge is specious and unfounded since Mr. Henry stated that, quote, 'there may have been attorney-client privilege contained in the billing statements but offered no specific evidence whatsoever to support his statements. There is absolutely no evidence that the billing statements that were released had any privilege information in them other than Mr. Henry's vague 'may have been' statement. Mayor O'Reilly has and will continue to have my unwavering support." John and Mary Hoyt, "Dear councilors, we are very much opposed to the Leon Valley City Council proceeding to a 312 hearing designed to remove our mayor from office. The Ethics Commission appropriately and adequately addressed the issue of the mayor's inadvertent and inconsequential error, which absolutely does not rise to the level of removing an elected official from office. Thank you for your consideration." Louise Malouf in Pavona, "I would like to voice my opinion. The item to try to get Mayor O'Reilly removed should not be on the agenda tonight. Isn't that against our charter, since it was not on the agenda before it was posted? Number two, the mayor was duly-elected, and no further action was supposed to have been taken, yet they keep trying before they are recalled. Number three, the other council members excluding one keep trying to get rid of her, but no action seems to be taken about the voters' wish for a recall for some members of City Council. Number four, keep her name on the ballot and let the voters decide in November. Should have been done in May, and others voted to be recalled as well. I am proud of Mayor O'Reilly and the work she has done for our city. Louise Malouf, and I'll be watching tonight." This is another one from Sarah Smart. "I hope the City Council understands the implications of moving forward with a 312 hearing against the accusations, on the accusations against Mayor O'Reilly, but does not move forward..." I believe she, yeah, she added to this one, so I have already read that one. Thank you. Ann Sawyer says, "I'm against removing the mayor. Sincerely, Ann Sawyer." And again. I don't know if I read this one or not. And then this one is from Justin Pullian, and y'all have voted not to hear his comments, which was opposed to this removal. And then, this is from Josh Stevens, but I believe this has been read. Yeah, facts matter. Okay, I believe I've read Mr., here's another one. Oh. Okay, this is another one. Sarah Smart keeps bringing them in here. "Citizens to be heard, I'll be short and to the point. Mr. Hody, you, the council entrusted in Ethics Committee to investigate and make a decision, the collective you did not like the outcome and think you can do better. Now a 312 because that outcome you can control. I'm sorry, but I want to know more. Is the farthest thing from a valid excuse to spend our money. What you want does not matter, sir. My mama always said, 'Never pick a fight with someone who has nothing to lose.' I'm so sorry, mayor, but you are up against two ladies who have absolutely nothing to lose. They will be recalled. If you want someone recalled, go out, do the work, talk to the people. Waste your own money, as we have. I see you prefer to take the easy way and exploit the power you were given by the citizens. That's a privilege, not a right." Phew, okay, that's it for the comments. Thank you for all of the comments that came in. I know everybody took a lot of time to express themselves and make sure that this is...
Mayor, if you're finished with everything, I'd like to say something.
You certainly may. I am done with the comments that have been submitted online. Go ahead, please.
I appreciate the citizens that you rounded up to get to write things on your behalf, but they need to weigh in the fact that we want to be fair, and it was you who went overboard to put the agenda item against Donna Charles, which has been done. It was Counselor Bradshaw who keeps accusing his fellow councilpeople of not being good and nice, and yet he refused to meet with the police chief. He'd rather spend time and money on an agenda item that could be resolved outside of it. It was you who admitted earlier that you went out and tried to talk a counselor out of proceeding tonight. What, it was you and your husband who proceeded against the city on behalf of Benny Martinez that ran up the charges? I think it's only fair that something be investigated the same way by, on behalf of both you and Donna Charles. Donna Charles was willing to step up to the plate. This isn't the only thing that happened or has happened over time. It continues to happen, and something needs to be investigated. And I make a motion that we appoint Attorney Bohorkes to investigate the situation or accusations or whatever it is against you, and schedule a 312 hearing, as is appropriate or not. And I think we need to get to the bottom of the things. I think that's what Mr. Hody said. He wanted the investigation. I never got a chance to second it earlier, so I guess it died, but so I'm renewing his motion and requesting a second at this time.
Was that a motion that you had? Okay, I thought it said in the, I don't have my, I meant to bring my Home Rule Charter. I thought it says something about you can't hire somebody that already is doing business with the city. I thought, could have sworn that, but anyway. Mr. Zek, can you remember, on investigating attorney? It's in our protocols or procedures, I believe. Yes, I don't, anyway.
I believe it, Mayor, that it had said something about somebody with no prior dealings with the city, which obviously Mr. Bohorkes would be very familiar with this issue because he was in charge of the Ethics Committee that this came out on. So obviously, he has some previous knowledge with it.
Right. And then...
What section was it in the charter?
No, it's not the charter. It's the procedures, the 312 procedures. And Ms. Al Quesera, I take personal offense to your snide remark that I gathered all these people to write in on my behalf. I didn't contact one person at all. And so, shame on you for disrespecting the citizens. They came out on their own to... you for disrespecting the citizens. They came out on their own to express their opinion and support of me. I had nothing to do with it. You want to continue to go back to the Benny Martinez situation? If we go forth with this 312 hearing, which I'm totally against, and totally against with Donna Charles, again, I just wanted to point out the hypocrisy, it would not go back to the Benny Martinez issue at all. It would have to remain, I guess, the ethics and then what Ms. Charles did. If we end up doing that, which I'm hearing from the citizens, they don't want -- the majority of the citizens that called, that wrote in, do not want that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I may.
You may.
I counted 23 citizens, and several of them were a husband and wife, so over two dozen citizens. I don't think any of them were for the 312 hearing. Every single one was against wasting more money, and I 100% agree. You know, the Ethics Review Board already reviewed this issue. They already said no further action, and I also am very concerned that, you know, the issue with the releasing the so-called attorney-client privileged information is a billing statement of, from the Benny Martinez hearing. This is taxpayer money that we're spending. You know, taxpayers have a right to this information to know what's going on, and to try and hide it and keep things privileged, it's just another sad example of how this council is functioning.
Well, it's already been released. It was released in the Ethics Hearing on the board up here, so everybody saw it, so it's not privileged anymore. So, Mr. Johnson? We have a motion, and is there a second to that motion? Who was that? Was that Mr. Hody?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And this is further discussion, and then Mr. Johnson, please.
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. I'd just like to set the record straight. Mayor Riley, you did not contact me, or I know for a fact, seven others that sent in letters. There was a grassroots campaign by concerned citizens to send those in. I don't think you had any knowledge of it until you received copies of it, of what was being submitted. So the allegation that you went out and solicited support letters is not only false on its face, it's repugnant to me. The record, let the record show that it was a grassroots campaign by a number of concerned citizens, and that you were not involved, nor your husband, were not involved in any form or fashion. Thank you.
I just had a clarification, Mr. Zech, on setting the 312 hearing and actually designating an officer that already is the Ethics Attorney for the city. Are we familiar with that?
Yeah, I just wanted you to know, he was the Ethics Attorney for the last case. It doesn't mean you have to use him on every case. So I don't know of any document that designates him as the permanent City Ethics Attorney. He's just temporarily used for that case.
No, but I think, I thought that the procedure said that you needed to have an independent investigative attorney that doesn't have any, that does not, has not done any business with the city, prior business. That's what I'm recalling, but I don't have it in front of me, so...
I mean, we've, like, Charlie's firm has done business with the city, and we're using them as our city attorneys, so I...
No, this is just on the investigative attorney, that's all. Just specific to the investigative attorney, and I believe it's under the procedures. And I forgot that at So, Mr. Zech, I guess you haven't had a -- can we just say we're going to set the 312 hearing and wait until we do the research on the investigative attorney, based on the procedures, the protocols for the 312 hearing? His phone is on, but now I just have a black blank screen.
Let me go get my phone. Charlie, we can't hear you again. Tell him to hang up and...
Hang up and call back in again.
All right, I'm back.
Very good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm not familiar with what the mayor is speaking about. I was looking at the charter while she was speaking. There's nothing in the charter.
No, it's not in the charter. It's the protocols that go with the 312 hearing that we...
Well, it'll say what it says. I mean, if it was a policy that was adopted by City Council in the form of...
Right, and I don't have it in front of me, so...
But it's enforceable, but I would have to look at it. I'm not familiar with it.
Mm-hmm. I meant to bring it with me, and I forgot.
Mayor, I don't see anything. If this is the document you're referring to, can you hand this down, please? I couldn't, I can't find anything. Maybe that'll refresh your memory.
Okay, it says, "The designated officer shall be an attorney or law firm which is not employed by the city and does not have any active representation of the city in order to promote neutrality in the process, and a disinterested investigator." So he is not and does not. We don't currently have anything active with him right now.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
He is definitely not a disinterested investigator, because he has prior knowledge of this case. He was the Chair of the Ethics Board, Attorney for the Ethics Board...
Attorney.
...while it was being conducted.
I think it's up to this body, but I, Charlie, Attorney Zech and I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Zech, but we talked about this very, if this happened, the fact that that would actually be the best person to do it, because it would cost the city so much less, because he already has the knowledge. So, but again, that's a council decision.
It is.
Yeah, and disinterested, disinterested by definition means they don't have a personal interest...
Right.
...in the outcome.
So it sounds like he would be the best option, because he already has the information, and it won't cost him to have to review everything, if that's the way the council's leaning, just trying to save some money.
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Kinsler, would whoever the investigative attorney is, whether it's Mr. Bohorkes or somebody else, their job is strictly to look at the details, the facts, the paperwork?
Their role would be to assist the governing body through the process. They're not, they wouldn't be making any decisions. That's obviously within the purview of the City Council. Their role would be to guide the governing body through the investigative process.
Well, in this, in this case, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zech, they would be guiding the governing body through the hearing, because that's what the language says.
Yeah, that's correct. Through the 312 hearing process. You're correct about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And, Mr. Zech, the City Secretary just emailed you that document that the mayor was referencing, so you'd have it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
He could do both Donna's and the mayor's.
The hearings at the same time, with the same attorney?
They don't have to be the same time, but the process, the investigation process, if it's necessary, whatever's necessary. I mean, I don't have a problem with him doing each one. It's the same, so they're, then they take away what they're claiming is some bias or whatever.
I'm happy to give him a call tomorrow if that's the will of the body.
Well, I would just prefer somebody that hadn't, does not have any connection to anything, completely neutral, I think, is what we should do if we're going to go forth with that, but I have no vote.
I agree, Mayor. It should not be the same attorney that guided the Ethics Committee that already found the violation. You already know what's going to happen. He already said that you violated attorney-client privileged information. I would like to get a fresh set of eyes on this, a different attorney, and honestly, I think that the Ethics Committee was incorrect in their ruling. They didn't point out a single thing that was attorney-client privileged, and the Attorney General said that billing statements are not attorney-client privileged, and they went against the Attorney General of the state of Texas to say that Ryan Henry is correct. They had no reason, they had to take his word for it, I think is what they said. So, you know, I just think that it is not a good choice to have this guy be our attorney during this. I'm against the whole thing, anyway, but if we have to do it, definitely shouldn't be Bohorkes.
Okay, Ms. Alkaser, I believe you started the motion. Would you please restate your motion? And then, Mr. Hody, if you're going to second it.
I'm that Mr. Bohorkes be appointed as the investigative attorney to look into and recommend, or proceed with the 312 hearing, whatever the procedure is necessary to determine what action, if any, should be taken, and that if he doesn't feel comfortable doing it, that the next, another attorney recommended by TML be appointed. But if he feels comfortable that he can proceed with this one, and if the council wants him to do Donna Charles' issue, then that's fine, too.
Actually, since Donna Charles' issue has already passed, I'll just use the...
I mean, now Donna Charles, I'm just throwing that out, so that's the, so it's the same motion, just giving an alternative if Mr. Bohorkes feels he's not the appropriate one. And Matt, can, would you agree to the amendment?
I would second that amendment if he does not feel comfortable doing it. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Alkaser and a second by Counselor Hody to appoint Alan Bordeorcas as the attorney for the 312 hearing, to determine what action should be taken against Mayor Riley and Donna Charles. Unless he feels uncomfortable, then it comes back to the body, or I guess it does, it needs to come back to the body, because it's the council who appoints.
I'd like to, it won't do any good for it to come back to the body unless we have somebody from TML, and then we get, we will do it, but we need a name from TML. Obviously, we're not agreeing unless you want Mr. Henry back, or whatever. That was the joke, but anyway, I'd like it to proceed like saying if he's uncomfortable, then the TML recommendation we can follow.
And that's how we get all of our attorneys, is we go through TML, the recommendations, same thing, same way we got Mr. Henry and Mr. Bohorkes.
Okay, Ms. Pasolay, if you'll please call the roll.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Chara?
Well, since it involves me also, I think I have to abstain.
Counselor Alkaser?
Yes.
Yes.
No, and I would like to say that this is your legacy, that you're leaving behind, what you're doing to the city. You continue, continue to spend taxpayer money, and the citizens will not stand for it.
Okay. The motion carries three eyes, one nay and one abstention. Next is citizens to be heard. Any of the people in the chambers want to say anything before we adjourn this evening? Yes, Mr. Mata.
Yeah, I have some points that I took down throughout this. You know, from my perspective, it seems Councilwoman Charles obviously has no problem moving forward with this investigation, because she knows the outcome is already going to be determined in her favor, right? She's got the majority here. She's got some high-level staff that will support her. I'll make sure that this council majority does her work. And kind of in that same vein, dealing with hearings with a predetermined outcome, of course you guys want to hire an attorney that's been involved with the city, you know? I think there's a bit of an unholy alliance we see going on with these attorneys that are constantly used by the city manager and the council that approves them. I think they thrive off this madness and dysfunction, making money off this city. There's thousands of attorneys in this state. There's probably thousands of attorneys that we could bring in that would be unbiased. If you're really interested and you really want to get down to the bottom of this, why be so biased? Why try to control it all? It's obvious. You want to do it your way. You don't want to, you don't want to do it for the people. This is not about us. And again, this was brought up, Mr. Johnson spoke about this earlier, the offensive notion by Councilwoman Alkaser that us lowly citizens cannot think for ourselves, and we need Chris Riley to organize us and get us over here, is outrageous. It's ridiculous. There are plenty of things I disagree with our mayor on, okay? And we, I've talked to her about that, and I'm honest about it. But again, this is about behaving yourself and not wasting taxpayer dollars. This is not about a power play. Get off of it. It's enough. You know, you know, this dysfunction, it festers, and it's going to continue to fester, unless you guys all look at yourselves in the mirror and say, what have I contributed to this, or how have I contributed? If you really cared, you would listen to the citizens who are overwhelmingly saying, stop it, work for us. And, you know, I was also very troubled by Councilman Rodriguez, who decided to pick on a comment I had to say. I never pointed her out. I was speaking about every elected official here. You are our servants, and it's not a bad thing. If I was up there, I would understand that as well, and I would be sensitive to the needs of the citizens.
Okay.
Listen.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles? And Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As to conclude, everything I've... As to conclude, everything I've said throughout this whole time, I would ask as a concerned citizen amongst many who have been here watching what y'all contribute to this city, biweekly, quarterly with the reports that come out, the projects that are presented to y'all and approved and completed. We see what, what's happening, what goes on, at least in the community, and we hurt when there's dysfunction on the council. I would ask that instead of looking in the mirror necessarily, do get with each other and figure out how it is as y'all can denounce the factless attacks, the sensationalist narratives, and the, what's the term? The leading, if this were a court, you know, a lot of citizens like to lead with narratives without ever asking a question or providing a fact to such a conclusion. And, you know, it leaves us citizens to ask each other those questions and without a title behind us, we, to some, we are nobody. But we are always somebody. If we have the power to vote y'all in and out, if we have the power to tell y'all that y'all work for us, then we have the power to tell one another, to police one another, and to at least ask that y'all respect and acknowledge what we're trying to do and denounce the bad that is happening both on the council and in the community. I appreciate everything. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, while Mr., our chief is cleaning, Mr. Johnson and then Mr. Orozco, let me read another comment that's come in from Ms. Smart. "Please see your own charter, investigation, and hearing. Ms. Charles does not get to choose investigation or 312 hearing. There should probably be a motion to investigate and have a hearing pursuant to 312 in order to be compliant with the Charter." And I guess, and then it says 3.08b subsection B subsection 4. "If a member of City Council violates any provision of this section and does not immediately resign, the City Council may conduct an investigation and hearing pursuant to section 3.12 of this Charter to determine if the office holder is in violation of this section." So this is from Sarah Smart, who's an attorney, and I don't, don't know how to respond to that or if there is, it'll be part of the record, though. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. There was concern on the dais and the two missing councilpersons who didn't even grace us with their image about spending $96,000 for the fire department, which is sorely needed. How much are we going to spend on two 312 hearings and to what end? At least $100,000 because there are two of them. That money is better spent. I think that the entire notion of both 312s is, is repugnant to me and the council should go back and put an agenda item on for the next council meeting or have a special meeting and overturn their votes that they've already had and stop this. Just flat stop this infighting. It's ridiculous. The charges against the mayor are extremely specious. The Attorney General for the State of Texas, his office has weighed in and said attorney, attorney billing does not have attorney-client privilege. So how can the Ethics Review Board have concluded that there may have been some attorney-client privilege in those billing statements? The, the office of the Attorney General will weigh in on those specific ones before too long. And when they do and say, "There is no attorney-client privilege here," what have, what have we spent the money for? Because that basically overturns the findings of the Ethics Review Board. The 312 investigation and hearing against far more readily established fact of releasing privileged information, I, where are we going with this? Why are we going to spend at least $50,000 on each of these when there are better things to be done? Mr. Moreno has posted a number, I believe it's Mr. Moreno, has posted a number of statements on Next Door.
That's the three-minute limit. Thank you. Three minutes. Unless you, if he had one more, yeah, I think we're good. It's late. It's 11:30. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Orozco.
I don't think much of your time. I know it's late. What a black, black night it is for Leon Valley. I wrote a letter a couple of weeks ago that Counselor Brashall read, and I had mentioned that Dr. Rodriguez and Hody had a great opportunity to change things around in Leon Valley. Well, obviously, they didn't heed that, and I'm, and I'm sorry that you didn't. I know that you're doing, you think it's right, but you had an opportunity to change things in Leon Valley and you didn't. It's a very, very dark night for Leon Valley. I'm very, very disheartened with the things that have transpired here today. You know, I, it worked, when I worked at the hospital, I had over 200 employees that I supervised, and they never, you know, they never saw eye to eye all the time, but they knew they had to work there, even though you didn't like each other, but you had to work there. And you have to work here. You have to work for the people of Leon Valley, but most of all, you have to help yourself, help the Leon Valley. And you can't do that unless you start changing things around and when you have that opportunity to. And you don't, you have the opportunity now to change things. You guys, all of you are great leaders. I know you are. I know you have it in your heart. I know you're smart, you're intelligent. I know you are. You wouldn't be here if you weren't. Take advantage of that. Show us, lead us, lead us, the citizens, to a better Leon Valley and the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orozco. Okay, I think that's, unless there's a few more people, but if there's no other, we will move to adjourn at 11:30 on Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. So adjourned.